Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 5:31. Welcome everyone, and let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any motion to approve tonight's agenda? I'm going to approve tonight's agenda as posted. Having a motion in a second, I'll have to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So we'll move on into the budget workshop. So it looks like we've been presented with the 2223 Certified Salary Schedule, Salary Matrix for last year, and last year's classified salary schedule, and last year's admin schedule, and the fund summary. So I think we should probably start on the fund summary. So this includes the the proposed budget for this year, is that correct?
Correct.
Are they missing a column?
Well, she converted it to a Google Doc. I did it in Excel and made a PDF because I have to send it to the paper, so
Do you want me to open it differently?
That didn't
It just looks like you're missing a column.
Yeah, if you just keep it as the PDF, that or not that way, just you had it as the PDF right there.
Did I?
Yeah.
Where is it?
Just
If you Right, up one.
Nope, where?
Up one from where you just were.
And you just happen to be, I mean, you could download, either open it or Acrobat, or just keep it here and just hit the little
The little plus button down.
The plus button down there, and it will zoom it in. Yeah, right there.
The plus, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
That just zooms it in, but I'm still on Google, no?
Well, you're
It's just not
You're in the browser right now. Yeah, you didn't convert it to a Google Doc.
The other way you had
So we could, you could download it out of the Google Drive and open up Acrobat, and you could blow it up a little bit more.
Can we do that?
Or whatever works for the board. Or if they'll see it on their screen, I guess.
Yeah, we've got it on our screens.
Yeah. And, and so for this, you know, this is that format that I've talked about before that is the required format for us to publish in, in the newspaper. All the other information after this, the fund summary, this sheet, and then the individual funds are really the same information presented, I think in an easier way to view it. But this is the form that goes in the paper because this is what is prescribed, you know, the State Department approved form. So this is what is in the actual advertisement. And it shows our prior year actuals from 2019, 20, 2020, and '21. The 2021, '22 numbers are budget, they're not actuals, because the actuals aren't done yet. So that really, even though the heading says prior year actual slash budget, it is just budget.
Correct.
But I, I don't alter their form. And then the proposed budget for this year. And, you know, left is the general fund, the right is all other funds. And this, the next sheet is sort of similar, you know, and that's sort of the sheet that we tweak for the monthly report. And this one sometimes is a little bit better to look at because it has proposed than other funds, then combines them in one column. But it just has the budget, it doesn't have all those previous years. So those two are summary funds, and then all the pages behind it are all the individual funds that make up those two summary sheets. So that, we could get into more details there if you wanted to break it down to individual funds.
So why do we have nothing in the capital outlay? Just because we don't want to set it aside, or just pull it discretionary, or?
We're not spending any capital outlay in the general fund, but we are, do have budgeted capital outlay in other funds of 1.468, if you look. Capital outlay in all the other funds is 2.29 million. If you looked at
But with, trust me, Grissom, within that, that, what you were just looking at, if you look at the fund balance, it shows a 23%. So there, there, there's definitely money there for the board to make some decisions about with regard to some capital outlay projects that we could, you could either budget right now and say that's, we want to spend this much, and Brian could write it in, or the board just knows that there's some, there's some money and we're well over the 8 to 16% for fund balance that our policy asks us to have. So there's some one-time dollars there for the board to make some decisions about.
In the general fund.
In the general fund.
What is scheduled for the 2.29 million in all the other funds?
So if we go to capital projects, first is, I'll go to Fund 420, which is the cap, the plant facility fund. And if you want, we could go to that individual sheet.
We're, we're looking for 420.
Which is way down, it's near one of the last ones. And so
It's page 22.
So there's, that, that's the revenues. And so on that sheet, the revenue show, we'll probably get a little bit of local tax revenues, very minor, and maybe some interest. But overall, we're, you know, that fund is expiring this year, so we're not going to collect any new property taxes on the plant facility fund. We have an approximate starting balance in July, depending on when some POs come in, of 1.1 million. So I have a little bit of supplies and materials budget on a PO that's already outstanding, that it's not going to finish until the next fiscal year, starting in July. The 907,550, so the remainder of capital projects of those, of that 970 here is, we have the John Brown Roof scheduled, that's not going to happen until next fiscal, this summer, but it'll hit in July. So that was approved by the board for 128,000. The Athol Carpet, that will be a summer project, will hit next, that, you know, next year for 49,000. Half of the Betty Keifer Roof, we've paid half because they've ordered materials. They'll complete that, that's another 193,000. The Lakeland High School Bleachers of 53,000. Timberlake High School Bleachers of 184,000. Mountain View High School Carpet of 49,000, almost 50, 574. We had, we haven't paid for that, it will come in. We had the fire panel at Athol is, is at end of life, and we have to replace it for $8,000. The electrical for the, for the bleachers is roughly 15,000 for those other projects, and parking lots that are scheduled for this summer that the board had approved for 47. So that gives us $728,000 of that 907, that sort of, the boards have already approved those projects. They're just, they're just not going to happen this June, in this fiscal year. So that gives us a balance of 179, or let's say 527, or say 180,000. That, that is not, that's only, that I've not designated that for a project. And then the last, that transfer out of the 189,608, that is the dollars from land sales that we put in for future land purchases. We don't have to
That is a reserve.
Right, and so that was for a sale of 10 acres out in Houser, and for a parcel up in Spirit Lake. That's, and we've been just sort of holding onto it. So as, what I recommend is budgets, that we take those dollars in the plant facility, facility fund sort of closes, and the special purpose fund goes away, that we move those to a local fund for projects, just a different fund number because it's not, it's not a levy fund. The board also, if you wanted to use those dollars for a capital project, we certainly could. But right now, it's just in holding pattern for those. So there's really 180,000 dollars out of the 907 that is some future projects that I have not, I budgeted the capacity to spend it, but I didn't have a specific project. You know, we can have, you know, those conversations on whether the board wants those priorities.
The bleachers and all that you were mentioning, though, the vote on that was SRR funds. So that would be separate from this?
I don't believe I can, all capital projects from the state, we have to submit a a capital expenditure request from the state and get it approved before we can, and get approval from the state before we can spend it when we do our grant claim. And after talking with the state, I don't believe that bleachers are going to count for COVID-related.
Well, it wasn't COVID-related, the SRR3, the conversation was, we need to go back and look at that because that was the vote. Conversation was the discretionary funds, and I specifically asked for a definition of discretionary, and that was the vote, was to use those funds. But either way, I think we need to to look at that just to, just to see, because there was a discretionary fund portion, or, I'm sorry, discretionary dollars in the SRR3 funds, or go back and look at the actual conversation that we had about the bleachers?
Well, we, we could on that, I, I'm telling you, on SRR funds, they're, they're not, it's not completely 100% any use we want to do.
No, I understand, believe me. I'm more focused in that, I don't need an explanation of that. All I'm doing is recalling the conversation that we had, and I want to make sure that whatever the board decided, you know, I'm a little gun shy because for three years now, we've been trying to get the doors replaced at Lakeland Junior High, and that has not happened. So when I see that we have not purposely taken money for capital outlay to say, these are the things that the board's been wanting to do, because I, I get the fact that we have extra dollars out there, not extra, that's not a good word to use. But We, yeah, we have a little bit of leniency, right, for things that we can accomplish. I just want to make sure that as the year goes on, as been my, has been my experience the last three years, those dollars end up in other places. And I don't want to see that happen. Athol has great needs. The junior high has needs for the door. I know that last time I was up at Spirit Lake Elementary, they have needs. I just want to make sure that those needs are met. That's my, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's my wish is that, you know, we actually start tackling those projects. I heard you're reading off that list, but did we get that list that you were just, what, is that on a certain page?
Those are my notes.
Oh, okay.
But those are all things that the board has approved.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I guess on the SRR with the bleachers, I think, I don't, I can't go back to exact words.
Sure, sure.
I knew, or at the time, that definitely I was not 100% sure that SRR dollars could be used for bleachers.
Yeah.
There's gonna, I mean, it's supposed to be direct, like you do an HVAC project, probably the school buses, you know, I've requested school buses for SRR dollars, and that's, and that's part of capital in another fund that we can show. I haven't got approval from that yet, from the state.
Sure, yeah.
So I, I think for the bleachers, since it's super gray, that we could take it from the general fund, or we can take it from this plant facility fund. I don't think we should try to do a federal grant claim for bleachers that really aren't COVID-related. In fact, they would argue that it's against COVID-related because you have a crowd.
So we need to find something else
To offer.
Correct. And we certainly can do that.
Yeah, and we need a better understanding of the SRR3 funds because there was a lot of leniency in some of them. And from my recollection, which could be totally off of the SRR3 funds, was that there was much more leniency in those funds than prior. But I could be wrong. I just want to make sure that the capital projects get done. I have great concern when I go throughout the school district and I see the condition of the schools, I just, I, it's unacceptable. You know, we have to do something, and I know we have other needs because the other concern is all of these classrooms that are going to be exploding, and we can't add on to the building. So in my head, again, the only thing I see to resolve the issue is more portables, and those we know are going to be, you know, well, I mean, we have no choice. We can't build another building, and we cannot saddle teachers with 30 kids to a classroom. You know, I mean, I don't know what you, what your suggestion would be for that, but that's, I mean, it's getting, you know
Putting portables in is pouring money down our avenues, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, they're, they're a tight case of waste of money.
Yeah, well, I don't
What do you do with the over-credit classroom fund?
Yeah, we don't have any more room.
When we, when, when those that came before us didn't set aside monies to build new schools, the reliance is solely on the taxpayer, and obviously, that was shut down by the taxpayer. They said, no. We need a solution. And granted, I don't like the idea of portables, but I would wholeheartedly shower every elementary school with portables as opposed to having 31 to 35 kids in a classroom. Because those children don't learn. I mean, you're creating an environment that is not conducive to teaching children. You're just creating an environment to manage classrooms. So I, I mean, I'm really concerned because I know we desperately need to address the growth that we have. I mean, it's already here, and it's only going to continue.
Right.
So, and we don't have the resources right now. I mean, oh, I shouldn't say that. We have unbudgeted monies that are, that have accumulated, and we, we need to solve this. At least, if we're not solving it today, we need to have a plan in effect that we can support moving forward, knowing this is how we're going to solve it. Which we need to build at least one, if not two, more elementary schools. Where's the money to do that? So
That's all I'm saying, I mean, obviously, this is, might not be the exact location is what I'm looking for, the budgeted dollars. I know that there's funds sitting there, but we, we have a lot of needs coming up in this year.
So we, we have 189, roughly 189,000 dollars in plant facility funds unplanned expenditure at this point?
Unplanned, correct.
Okay. And so let's, let's make a note of that, and see what else we have as we go along here in the way of available capital funds.
Sure. And, and so for, I'll go to the next capital funds that are, we have expenditures on. If you just go to, real quick, on Fund 424, which is the bus depreciation fund, which will continue, it's 420,000 dollars. Those are the buses that have been approved, they have not been delivered. They'll probably be delivered in August. So that's why they're, it's just waiting for those to show up. And there, those are the, and so if those show up, we get our state revenues from the bus depreciation from that, and with our start balance, it's pretty good right now because we haven't written the check for those buses that we did have issued a PO. We could have, you know, approximately 370,000 remaining after those buses are purchased. And so
That's, that's with the assumption you get your bus depreciation funds in?
Yeah, at the end of the year. Correct. They're sort of late with that payment, that's like the last payment. They actually give us that money usually after the fiscal year, but it's credited back. And then the last capital projects that are, where the big capital projects are, is actually Fund 250, which is SRR3. And so SRR3, we have about, the total allocation is 5.8 million dollars, and the grant ends in two years. So for this year, for SRR3, I've budgeted half to the 2.9, 2,935, 275 dollars is half of SRR3 available. We haven't drawn down any SRR3 funds yet.
Okay, can I interrupt you? Before we jumped into the SRR3, for child nutrition, Fund 290, you have 498 in capital outlay, 498,000?
And those are the projects that the board has approved, they haven't happened.
Was that the steamer tables?
The steamer tables, the truck has still not been delivered. Yeah, and
And the lunch tables? And the lunch tables.
Yeah.
I knew what you were talking about.
There might even been an oven in there too, some ovens and things.
Okay, so those are the things we've discussed that we've approved.
And we just haven't got delivered. So it's really almost sort of a carryover. And then, and then if Kevin wants to do some future things, next year, he wants to replace some more equipment, we'll come to the board with that before we move forward.
Okay, and that capital outlay within the child nutrition is because of the excess funding that we have in child nutrition that we've received through SRR funds? Is that correct?
No.
No.
The excess revenues really because of the programs generated that revenue. And the reason that it's really up is that for the past two years, meals have been free
Right.
For every student. So our participation is way up. And with the participation up and getting the reimbursements from the National School Lunch Program, it's really created, you know, higher revenues than, than traditional. So it's, we're, actually, there's a rule in the food, school nutrition program that you can only have three months of operating balance. In other words, you, if you're generating the revenues, you have to spend it. And so we actually got a letter from the state saying that you're getting close to how, what's your plan to spend it? So we wrote a letter to them saying, well, we have, you know, we've ordered this truck, we've ordered this thing, we'll move forward, and, and these things also next year to try to whittle that down. So we're definitely, we'll continue to invest in that program as the revenues come up. But yeah, that, those have been, those dollars that, no SRR dollars have gone towards the food nutrition program.
So the 498, is all of that committed, or not all of it?
I think not all of it's committed. I think Kevin threw, I asked him to help me with budget. He, he, there's other equipment he wants to buy next year, and he'll come with those, trying to put a little capacity.
Set some money set aside.
Correct.
You can go back up to the SRR funds, sorry.
Oh, no, that, that's good. And so the SRR funds, just overall, we're thinking of, you know, the 2.9, are trying to draw half of it down this year, then have half for next year. And that's, and then they're done, that's the end of the grant. So we have supplies and materials of 1.5 million, that would be the curriculum adoption, if you move forward, the curriculum adoption.
For science.
For science, it can go directly towards the SRR3 learning loss, and so it fits right in with
That's for math and algebra.
That's the K8 science and the 912 math.
And we certainly, the 415 of capital outlay is the Timberlake High School HVAC, which I've actually asked the state for approval and haven't got back yet, but hopefully, we'll have that. That project was okay by the board, I think in February or March. And the Athol and Spirit Lake Elementary Gym heaters, to replace those. And then our bus purchases, the other two that we just did, remember, we said we were going to go to use SRR funds for those, on those. So that adds up to the 415, that's only capital. So that's in this budget, but we could certainly add more. The salaries and benefits are not designated for anybody right now. What that capacity was for was in case we had growth, and you know, sort of how we've had emergency levies in the past, that we could use maybe those dollars for that. And so I just threw in some dollars of way to draw down. We could also put staff that are eligible for that, draw down dollars. And, you know, if you did it for one year, and they were budgeting the general fund, it would give you more capacity in the general fund to, because you can spend the dollar over there, you spend it over here, and fund balance will go up, that then you could dedicate those excess funds, maybe for capital projects, if we didn't have a big need for an emergency levy, or those type expenditures in September. Does that make sense?
So there's no commitment at this point for salary and benefits in terms of personnel, it's just there?
It's just there for capacity. We could certainly, so we could shift that to capital projects, we could. I, one thing I, I'm concerned about is that, especially with how long it's taking to get things, is that we may just have to move some budgeted salaries from the general fund over to SRR just to draw it down, because we're going to run out of time. That two years will hit us faster, and then we'll have the capacity in the general fund to go do things. We, that may be a way we have to approach this. Other districts have done that, because if we planned some capital project and it didn't come in, and it, we could be we, we could run out of time.
The dollars.
Correct. To draw these down.
I'm actually only budgeting half the money.
I, yeah, correct. I didn't budget the whole 5.8 million for this year.
The following year is one that could be tough in terms of getting things done quickly enough, if I understand.
Right, so, I mean, I think that, you know, a lot of it for some of these dollars, you know, if you have eligible expenses and eligible salary expenses that, that can be used, you know, a lot of times you take advantage of those dollars. It, it's one reason why our general fund has been growing, and then you can use those, then you have more flexibility with general fund dollars than SRR dollars. So it's sort of a, a smart way to go about it. There's been some districts that they've gone 100%, they've, they did that full meal deal, and they've claimed all the way, all their SRR3 dollars. We've tried to keep more, let's do SRR1 first, let's do SRR2 next, and now we're hitting SRR3 for the two-year. We're, we're trying to sort of stage it so that we didn't have maybe as big of a bubble or something.
But theoretically, we could generate beyond the 415 in this fund for some more capital outlay.
Correct.
If it shows to do
And, and right, and so for example, when, just so you know, also, for like the the Spirit Lake and Athol gym, you know, because it is further dollars, and we're going to draw these down, you know, we have to get the quote with Davis Bacon Wages, ends up being about 20% more generally. So sometimes if we do use salaries, you know, we, we can get more bang for our buck if we go that way, as opposed to the capital projects here. So anyway, that's just things to consider.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We just need a plan, I guess, for how that would get accomplished in terms of, if we're going to leave the salary and benefits at that level, we need to have some plan for how we're going to use that, and for whom, so it all makes sense. And obviously, then, if we're pulling that personnel out of the general fund, then those monies would be available in the general fund for some of the purposes.
Correct, and so, right, so, so let's say that, you know, some of the easy justifications for SRR dollars are custodial staff for, you know, COVID-related, keeping the buildings clean, tech staff, definitely, you know, classroom teachers to maintain operations, you know, so, I mean, those are all
We have MTSS teachers at, are both at our high schools and our middle schools. That's learning loss specific, which would fit in
That fits into a lot of the grant parameters that, when you draw down, and they, the reporting's quite extensive, and, and how you're spending the money for the SRR dollars. I just finished a really big report on it. So they're, they all sort of dovetail in with the, the grant parameters. And so, for example, let's say I've, you know, budgeted the John Brown Custody in the general fund, which we have. If we said, well, we're going to use some SRR dollars here to pay for custodial staff, well, if I, you know, then if if I, you know, then effectively draw down that salary here, it is budgeted, so it's, it's not like I didn't budget a general fund and just budgeted an SRR3. Does that make sense?
I think.
Trustee general, yeah, well, if I, if I took that position out of the general fund and put it in SRR, then really, next year I have a problem, right? Because now I'm built a general fund without that position. But I built the general fund with that position, so now I want to leave that fund in the position, but maybe we pay over here. And, and so the general fund will go up, and then those are conversations that the board could have on, okay, we have some extra capacity, do we want to take those dollars and do, you know, projects X, Y, and Z?
So do you have any thoughts, Lisa, about the scenario that we're talking about here?
As far as SRR dollars?
Yeah.
Well, I guess it makes the most sense to me that we, we use salaries and benefits on the SRR side and not the, and, and do what Brian's talking about and take the money that then we're not spending because we budgeted in the general fund and use that for the capital outlay, because then we're not paying the additional 20% in.
So you've got 20% more value the other way.
Exactly. It just feels like we're, we're getting more for our money that way. The other piece, as I'm listening to Brian, that's resonating is, we know for sure that salaries and benefits are strong qualifiers for SRR dollars where some of our capital projects might be a little bit iffy. And so the best way to know we're going to be able to do the things the board wants to do is to put the salaries and benefits here and use the general fund for the capital projects.
And we could certainly in the general fund, let, you know, we're, we have a, a healthy fund balance now. You know, and if the board didn't want it to be in the, you know, that's the big pot, right? That's the big soup in the general fund, say, wanted to move, you know what, X amount of dollars, say, for lack of a better number, a million dollars for five projects or what they might be, you know, we could certainly do a transfer out into a separate fund where it's easier to sort of see what projects are happening.
For capital projects?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do that if that's, you know, and that's sort of in a way the plant facility fund, but we don't have to. We can, you can, the general fund can be used for anything, it's general, but some, that, that's sort of how the board would like to see it, what makes you more comfortable and things like that.
And respectfully, I think the public would like to see, here's the money that we've set aside to do work. Here's the work we've done, and at the end of the day, we have this many dollars left over or not.
Correct, and, yeah, and that, and from a, how we would report that, like in our financials, that would be easier to see if you did the transfer.
Right, and, and I, I get that. I just, I think when we're saying, well, we did take some money from over here and we took some money from over there, and it's just, it's not clear, and so you don't see where the money was and where it went because we're pulling it from here, there, and everywhere. But going back to this Fund 250, my question is, and I think I already know the answer, but I just want to clarify. So the million that you have allocated for salaries and benefits, it's a 1,020,002.75. That doesn't have to be spent on salaries and benefits, but you just plugged it in there as in anticipation of possibly utilizing it there to, to do the old switcheroo. Which, it's, it's not a switcheroo, it's just.
It takes place of the emergency levy if we, should we have to do that, but we could just take people who are currently budgeted and, and attach names to that so that we free up money in the, it's however the board wants to do that.
Well, and I want to make, I want to be clear that what I hear you saying is, the salaries and benefits that SRR funds could potentially cover have already been budgeted in the general fund. And so what we're not doing is creating a deficit in the sense that when we come back the next year, when we don't have the SRR funds, we don't have the money to pay the people that the SRR dollars have covered.
Correct, yeah, and, you know, you know, as we look at, you know, budgets that, yes, and it was always the qualifier with what we know today. So, you know, our reality, next year, depending on, you know, let's say enrollment funding went away or some other factors that were beyond our control, then maybe we do have some, a different dynamic to, to address. The, the nice thing, but given that everything's equal, yes. But I, you know, I mean, I think that is sort of the good place the district is in, is that, you know, with some of the, you know, building up these balances in these funds, and especially the general fund, if there was, if the unexpected happened, or something like that happened, we, it's not like we were at a level where it's like panic mode. I mean, you would have, you know, a year, maybe a little more to be planful on how you might address that new reality. And hopefully we don't have to worry about that, but you never know.
Yeah, so the, the, the increase in the fund balance comes a little bit from using SRR1 and SRR2 dollars, right, to also doing exactly what you're talking about, where we already had things budgeted in the general fund and we used the SRR dollars instead, so we didn't expand the dollars we had budgeted. So I, what we're talking about is just continuing to do more of what we've been doing. To, and it, it does give us the option then to not have to get the approval from the state for the projects. Obviously, they're not going to approve, the state's not going to approve SRR dollars to be used for new siting at Athol. But we have built up a fund balance which would allow us to use those dollars.
See, and that was my understanding of what we were using for the bleachers, not that we were using SRR funds for the bleachers. It was my understanding that we were using that fund, or the general fund dollars that were being supplemented by SRR funds in other ways. And we have that surplus in the general fund, and that's what we were using for the bleachers.
And.
Okay.
Rather than.
And trust me, right, and we could certainly do that, and I could, you know, change this, and then that would just give us the, you know, roughly 300,000 or maybe not that much, but let's say 250, 275 capacity in the plant fund for additional projects. So I guess it's, if you pay at the plant fund, you pay a general fund in, in the big picture, it's six one dick way, half a dozen another, honestly.
But that's what, that was my understanding of, of where those dollars were, were coming from, was just that we had the additional monies, not necessarily that it was.
Because we had the, because of the way we use the SRR funds.
And part of it was the enrollment, the difference in using the enrollment funding.
Correct, and enrollment is.
We had that additional funding, so that's what we were using.
And the enrollment funding definitely is another reason why our fund balances should go up quite a bit next year. Or at least our guesses.
So looking at that one, the 415 is all committed, the one and a half is all committed for textbook adoption and so forth.
Hopefully the one and a half is high. I'm hoping we're not coming in at one and a half.
I, I put in a little bit fluff.
Yeah.
It's just hard to know right now.
I just, I just didn't know what the cost would be.
Right.
And so looking past, just for this fiscal year, that would give us another year, if we did half of the SRR funds of another curriculum adoption. And then there's, at that point, it would been, then how do we address it moving forward? But at least for the next two years, we, we could take advantage of these funds.
And the million dollars in salary and benefits, if that ends up getting spent for existing positions that are currently general fund positions, then the general fund's balance is going to grow by that amount.
Even that much more.
For a year.
You'd think.
Until we have to go back or something.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we need to determine how we can maintain within the budget an annual curriculum adoption of whatever, because if we're on a five to six year ratio, it would seem that every single year we're going to end up purchasing curriculum. We don't have anything in the budget specific for that. And we don't have anything in the budget that I can tell where we are just allocating money aside for capital projects that are, that we should be, we don't have anything for, what was that fund? You sent us something.
The land, 2% of the budget.
2% of the budget going towards.
Oh.
Yeah, that, we, we're required to do that and we don't.
But we do.
Yeah, we actually do.
Where?
That, our, that's.
It's line item, yeah.
It's, our expenditures on our maintenance staff are part of that, those dollars. So our people maintaining the buildings is part of supporting the buildings, so that's, and those numbers are generated from State Department reports that we just submit with our, with our fiscal data, but the state verifies that we are maintaining the statutory requirement.
Okay, so if, if we're maintaining the statutory requirement by simply paying staff to maintain, then we're not getting ahead of any of our problems when we have to constantly be coming back to the table going, Athol's needed sodding for about 10 years and we still don't have it. The junior high doors needed to be replaced, and I know for a fact this board three years ago said replace the doors, and we were told, no, they were repaired. So, I, I mean, those types of maintenance repairs have to get done and they're not, and we don't have, what I don't see is where we can pull that money to make it happen, so that we can be moving forward on the actual maintenance repairs. Yes, or at least.
Let's roll the general fund, the fund balance.
Okay, well.
Unless you want to roll through something else.
Well.
I mean, you can correct me. I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
No, I'm not. So, I, I think that the, all, all I can say about the Lakeland Middle School doors is I did what I was directed to by, by direct supervisor.
We've had a conversation.
I know, so, I, that's all I can tell you. So that if, if there was directions that were other than that, that was not communicated to me by my supervisor.
I accept that.
Okay. The other projects, I mean, we've spent significant amounts of dollars since I've been here on capital needs. We replaced the Spirit Lake roof. We replaced the Timberlake High School roof. We replaced the Timberlake, the Twin Lakes Elementary roof. The Garwood roof.
Right.
We've, I mean, those are significant projects from the plant facility fund is where they are funded. And now we're doing Betty Kiefer, John Brown. Lakeland High School roof was half a million dollars, and we just, last year we spent, I believe, what, it was 350, 400,000 on the Lakeland Middle School roof. So the, we, we have been doing significant investments, I think, in the buildings and, but we have not had a, you know, the, the reality in the state of Idaho is, the big dollar items for facilities come from either a plant facility fund or a bond
Okay.
at the local level. That's what's funded by this. The state does not fund facilities at the state level.
Correct.
So, we've had the plant facility fund for many years, and usually that's used for aggressive maintenance, not for a new building, it's just not big enough. A, a new elementary school, if we were building today, is going to at least be 15 million dollars. That's.
But the plant facility levy is the line item, I think, that Michelle's looking for. It was the line item for capital projects.
Yeah, the confusion is that, you know, you know, the district meets that, that minimum state standard in terms of expenditures for maintenance and repairs. But it's in that line item in the general fund as opposed to a chunk of money set aside for what you.
And we've been, right, and, but, but when we replaced, for example, the Timberlake High School roof, that counted towards that 2% for that year.
Absolutely.
That, so, those numbers count, I, our threshold's about 900,000 and a million dollars a year.
Yeah.
So the Betty Kiefer roof being, you know, almost 400,000 dollars is, is almost, just that one project is almost half of our obligation by that statute.
But I think what, I think what Michelle's getting at is that we really need to look at creating a replacement fund where we are putting money away for these projects so that they, so that it's not just, oh, we have some extra money, let's do this project. No, we are being progressive and putting money away ahead of time and building up a fund to do those major projects on an ongoing basis.
So you're looking at being proactive.
Scenario, but I think Brian has the, the seed for that in the creation of the new fund that you're going to transfer the 180,000.
Well, and we have, and that fund going forward could have money put into it from whatever sources we decide, and, and that's the designated fund for capital improvement.
Well, and then there's your 2% right there. You just, you don't have to say, okay, we paid these maintenance salaries and we paid, no, we could just take 2% and put it in this replacement fund, and that, and we have put money towards our facilities every year.
Well, we, I mean, that's certainly the board could do. I mean, really, when we look at, if you're looking at like setting aside, you're going to have to take a look at where we're at right now. And where the general fund money is going, let's say you're going to look at the general fund and move that, well, it's, it's salaries and benefits. And so it's either, you know, you spend less in those areas, which is either less people, or you, or you keep the same amount of people and you pay them less.
Which way we can do.
Right, or if you got new revenues, you didn't, all the revenues didn't, you know, go towards, you know, sort of those staffing things. So that's always the challenge because that's, you know, a need there also with just you know, with the pressures on wages right now, and that, it's not, maybe it's, it's a little, it's even, I guess, maybe even a little more pressure now than previous years, but it's always been there. And, and those are really, you know, sort of where you have to try to find that balance.
It's all a matter of balancing and prioritizing.
Prior to the end of this coming year, we, we've had a plant facility levy for as long as I've been in the district, and that was the line item that you're talking about. That was the one, or the 2%. And that was set aside every year for these projects, and we've opted not to run that. So now we're being tasked with, how do we continue to put that money aside with, bringing in 1.146 million dollars less than what we have been. So I guess that sometimes means we have to make hard decisions. Because right now we have more money going into the fund balance simply because we've offset what we usually spend out of general fund with SRR dollars, but that's stopping pretty soon. And so then we, we do have to make hard decisions because we only have what we have. And if we're going to say we're going to every year put a million dollars, then we have to figure out where's that coming from.
And it's, and it's going forward where the real problem will occur because whatever dollars we might choose to put in this special account for capital outlay out of the general fund, those are one-time dollars. I mean, there's no replacement for those dollars. So once you spend them, then you come to the end of your rope with that, with that fund unless you find some other source, and I don't know, I don't know what it could be because in essence, we've looked at, at the few funds that have capital outlay. Food service takes care of itself, you know, we've got a couple of others, but in, in the long term, you know, not having that plant facility levy is, is a problem.
I have a question. I'm totally new, and I forgive my ignorance, but I'm just reading a little bit more about this process, and what about the facilities maintenance matching funds? Is that something that the school gets funds for from the state of Idaho?
We get lottery dollars that are, you know, that gets, that are part of, you know, the, they ask you to spend on facilities when we easily meet that threshold.
What's that amount to?
It really varies, sometimes 250 a year. This year is going to be. Yeah, yeah, this year that those revenues are actually going to be up. I think during COVID, people were gambling more. Maybe nobody was winning, but they said that would be sort of a one-time thing and probably would go back down. Yeah, right, 250, 300, 350.
We used to get, you know, some federal forest funds and some PLA 740 and other kinds of things. Most of that has gone away.
And the federal forest fund is.
Twenty thousand dollars.
We got, the federal forest funds, we, we did get 20, like 22,000 this year, so I. We got, the federal forest funds, we, we did get twenty, like twenty-two thousand this year, so I, and we have bought like um.
Let's, let's do the doors with that twenty grand. How about that?
Well, from my understanding, it's going to take a little more than twenty grand.
Oh, well, maybe, I don't know.
The, but anyway, those federal forest funds that, yeah, we, we've also gotten like a van for maintenance or sometimes some equipment. We've bought with those ones, you know, sort of one-time expenses.
But those funds stand on their own. Uh, I mean, we could, we could transfer if, you know, if we wanted to try to suck things together in that respect, but typically those stand, those funds, you know, are in existence because they're required to, to be there.
Correct.
And uh, that's where this problem of getting a few dollars here and a few dollars there uh, is a little bit confusing, but. I don't, in, in terms of that federal forest money and that kind of stuff, is, is that scheduled for capital outlay?
I um.
Supplies.
I, so just sort of supplies and materials and purchase services. So what we've spent on, on the federal forest money recently is uh, we belong to the uh, professional technical cooperative of North Idaho. So um, before I got here, they're using the federal forest funds to sort of pay that eight thousand dollars to belong to that cooperative. So I've continued that, NIPTEC, I think it's called. And um, we've done some small purchases to, out of those funds, usually for a, a, a facility project or if they need things. So like a new scoreboard was at Lakeland Middle. That was, um, part of that cost was donated by STCU. But, you know, to get some of the electronics and some of those things is like a one-time short expense. Um, total cost was, some was, like that particular one was under five thousand, so it wasn't capital. It was just supplies and materials. But it was sort of a facility type thing. I think we bought a lawnmower out of there one year, one of the riding lawnmowers.
The membership you talked about, do we get a thousand dollars worth of benefit out of that?
Does.
That's not the finance director's question. That would be the instructional people.
I don't even know what that is.
Unless you're right, it's either.
I think Colby would say we do.
Uh, so it's a KTEC.
It's sort of associated with KTEC and the support of that.
Yeah, CTEC.
Okay. So there's a tie-in with KTEC?
Mm-hmm.
What is the name of it again?
NIPTEC, I think, is the North Idaho Professional Technical. I mean, I think they still go by the old name P T, Professional Technical instead of CTE, but.
Yeah, their foundation, right, meaning that the local people, um, yeah, I'm familiar with them. I, I had no idea we were paying dues to that group.
I think it's school districts. I think it's all, things like Kellogg and Wallace and Lakeland and.
Cause it's a cooperative.
Yeah, it's a cooperative. But I think it's all of school districts. I don't know if it's a foundation.
And do we pay a portion of the support for, for KTEC from the district here? What does that amount to?
Um, I actually have a note on that.
What was that question about? How much do we pay for KTEC?
We, we actually pay.
KTEC's going to be about two hundred and fifty thousand next year.
Okay, and we pay that over to the KTEC board for their.
Correct. We, yeah, Cordelain, we pay about two fifty. Post falls pays a little over three hundred and Cordelain pays about six hundred. Um, and that's one of the bigger purchase services. And we, we, we do the, Bella, they invoice us twice a year, so we just pay.
Then that comes out of the general fund.
Correct.
A lot of good information here.
This is why we're doing it, Mr. Jones. It was a great idea somebody had.
Let's, let's talk about the elephant in the room. That's the, that's the general fund fund balance.
So if you look at the general fund fund balance, we, actuals as we started the year at almost seven million, six point nine and change.
And should have been eight percent or whatever.
Max sixteen percent, yeah.
Right, and it was actually right around fifteen point seven, I, yeah, it was.
Right at sixteen.
Right around sixteen. So this year, I'm, so from that, if you take it, let's say, round it to seven, that we started the year, that I'm estimating and of course, you know, I always say when I make these estimates that the best thing is you know you're going to be wrong when you make it because it's not going to be exact. But I think, you know, it looks like, you know, we've been a couple million, depending on the, you know, every month above uh, where we started, we're maintaining that, so we're estimating that we're going to add from that start of seven of actuals to, we'll start the year when all of a sudden done with the audit at about nine and a half million, nine point four million eight hundred forty-three.
So we grew about two and a half AM?
Right, which is.
Correct.
Almost twenty-four percent.
Right. So if you look on the general fund sheet, the, just itself, if you went down a little bit.
One, one more page down.
Which just is there. So that, on the revenue side there would be roughly at, if you went a little higher up. One more, a little higher. There you go. On the revenues, the beginning balance there of nine point four, almost nine point five. That, if, let's say my number is dead on, then we're right around twenty-three percent fund balance. Given our expenditures of forty-one million. Our revenues, our, uh, the local tax revenues, supplemental levy and tort levy, um, a little bit of back taxes, other local or some small dollars that come in, some of those also the way we charge our ASB funds for yellow bus travel, reimburses. Um, so some of that is really accounting. It's not really additional revenues. State revenue, of course, is the uh, where the big dollars are, um, and our levy, of course, which is that thirty-one million, which is salary-based apportionment plus discretionary and some of the categorical funds that go into the general fund, but you know, the majority is uh, the state apportionment of discretionary and that. Um, our state funding, I'm estimating two hundred and thirty-nine funding units based on enrollment. So this year we earned two thirty-nine in, in a decimal for salary-based apportionment, so I'm sort of budgeting just flat. Since we have the enrollment rules there, I didn't, I could have maybe built budget two forty-one, two forty-two, a few more funding units, but I, I, I wanted to keep it at there.
You don't count them until you see the white circle.
There you go.
Yep.
So we sort of kept it there. The, and, and because I maintain that discretionary, or not discretionary, the, that enrollment funding, I mean, that really is, you know, generating much more revenues and, and that's good news. The other increase outside of enrollment is the, the state gave us on the discretionary funding side out of salary-based apportionment, another six thousand, three hundred dollars in discretionary funding on, on the unit price. It was twenty-nine thousand, now it's thirty-five and change. Those dollars, though, in the legislation were saying to be directed towards medical benefits, to try to get some of the districts over into the state plan. So we did, through negotiations, um, increase, you know, our, enhance our benefit package and to approximate cost of one point five million and that's what that six thousand is. So those dollars we sort of used as intended, not, didn't hold them off for another use. Um, but that's where our, really, the increase in state funding is where our increase in funding is coming from enrollment plus that increase in medical. Um, for our expenditure side, and, well, finally, I guess in the last revenue, there is a little bit of federal revenue on the federal E-rate program. That's, all the other federal revenues go into the special revenue funds, but E-rate, we, we've just kept into the, the general fund. Expenditure side, you can see that thirty-six of the forty-one um, is salaries and benefits. And that really reflects our staffing levels right now plus anticipated increased costs of, of the negotiated agreement. Um, as we worked through IBB with the four percent raise, the increased medical and things like that.
So this doesn't take into consideration any additional?
We've had staff that we know are going to be there as far as um, you know, like the uh, additional security personnel that we're adding, that's in budget, um, if we knew, but no, otherwise I um, I've, I've budgeted sort of our staffing level of right now, so if we had to add, um, let's say eight teachers, I didn't put this in that budget.
But the people that we've hired already that you know about that are additional FTEs?
Yeah, for those things that we knew were going to happen or we, we've done those, I've done those things, but let's say suddenly, I don't know, a school grows, Lakeland High School has another seventy-five kids and they say we need two teachers. I, I didn't have that in there. I had their current staff. Or, or, or a position that was open that, you know, we, you know, Lisa had said, yes, we're, you know, this position's going to be coming next year, so have it in budget. So yeah, those are covered.
And the, the three that Brooke sent over, the three job descriptions, one's a tech position and I think the other are counselor and um, special ed.
I couldn't hear that.
Sorry. Uh, does that include the three new positions that um, are possibly going to be added to job descriptions? The tech person, another counselor and then a special ed teacher or something?
Yes, we're, we're, yes, we're covering those things, yes.
It's just what's not covered is when we get to August and we have big enrollment increases because that's when registration happens. Those are not covered.
Supplies and materials, line item of one point six, uh, instructional supplies, does that also include uh, maintenance or?
We, yeah, the supplies and materials is, we allocate as part of the sort of a building budget formula, about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars goes to the buildings. So like John Brown has twenty thousand supplies and the high school has more. They have about eighty thousand of supplies. So to the ten buildings, about three seventy goes to the buildings as part of budget. Instructional materials, we've, and this is what we budgeted this year, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars of a sort of a uh, curriculum instructional materials budget. So there's been times where you, you had a kindergarten classroom and they need, you know, more kids and you needed to buy some of whatever that proof curriculum is, that Dr. Pasley or Susan Arnold can, you know, have resources to buy those materials. Um, so that's in budget.
Yep, just out of that, um, when our science teachers need chemicals for chemistry lab or um, life, you know, frogs for the life science lab, that we have, so there's this hundred thousand dollars for secondary instructional supplies and then a hundred thousand for elementary and those go through then and me.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's in this abbreviated form, the line item where textbooks in the future would have to come into play. In other words, if we don't have another resource to buy textbooks and.
Well, correct, and the.
If, if, we would need to beef this enough.
Right, and you could, correct. And so the, you know, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars goes to maintenance custodial supplies. You know, just paper and then of course, uh, some things in general from the maintenance purchases, filters, parts, supplies, that's ongoing. Um, we budget twenty-five thousand dollars a year for supplies for security. You know, a camera, if we need things for the security personnel, things like that. Um, I increased our budget this year for diesel, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I hope.
Hope that's enough?
I hope that's enough. It's sort of crazy.
Hope we actually have diesel. They're actually saying right now we might not actually have it.
I mean, so part of that, one point six million, three hundred thousand is just what we think diesel will cost next year. I mean, it's part of that. Um, and then there's a hundred and twelve thousand of transportation parts. Um, you know, just the bus barn buying to keep our, our fleet going. And there's also, um, I don't have the dollar amount there on my notes, but um, it has to be, I can take a look, um, twenty-five, thirty, forty, I mean, there's, for athletic uniforms supplies, those end up being part of that pot of supplies. So like the, the high schools have a fund to do helmet reconditioning, to do a uniform rotation and those dollars are also part of that one point six million.
So there's a lot of stuff that kind of gets stuffed in there.
Yeah, it's sort of the, yeah, that, the supplies and materials is sort of a big um, catch-all of all those smaller purchases. And we do use other funds for some of that, but that's, the general fund really supports most of that. The three million of purchased services, um, really, the big ones are utilities are in that line item. Um, our special education, students with disabilities, purchase services, there, there's services that, I mean, it's several, a couple hundred thousand dollars of, of SLP or OTPT services and that we don't have staff that you cover those needs to meet the needs of the IEP are there. Our, our phones, so like our phone service, I actually budgeted reduced cost this year as of, as we moved forward with this.
Woo-hoo, Mr. Jones.
The summer, but I did also budget part of supplies and materials. I did budget the one-time cost of that one point six million is part of that is sixty-five thousand for phones. The one-time cost, so, um, you know, other services, you know, snow plowing, we budgeted about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the contracted service for snow plowing. Other maintenance services, KTEC is a purchase service, so part of that three million dollars is that two hundred and fifty or a little bit more going to KTEC. Athletic travel, so when you see all those uh, uh, purchase services for travel, that's part of that, three million, those buses, that's part of that.
We're paying through the nose for that.
I, I have a solution.
Officials, um, you know, we, we, for the two high schools for officials, I think that's seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year that you end up paying and, uh, you know, some of our software, Skyward, you know, all those software subscriptions that you maintain are part of. Those are like the big ticket items in that purchase services line.
How much do sports bring in every year?
Sports, I.
Like gate money and.
I, I, I would have.
Gas fee cards.
To watch, nothing.
To the district.
No.
It goes right to the.
That's what I'm asking, like all the.
I could get those numbers. I don't have that right in front of me. Yeah, we could, I could certainly get the gate money.
Yeah, it's kind of one of those school reports, if you look at those.
We could get there. It's in this, the past couple of years, especially with COVID and now going, that gates have been way down. I know when I've talked to the principals. Um, but I could, I mean, if you want.
I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that information for you.
ASB fees get spread across all activities, so you know, drama gets a little bit and FFA gets a little bit.
Yeah, gates is a little bit. I mean, football, I think, is the big, I mean, they're the ones who get, I mean, that generates the most the gate, for sure.
And they weren't even allowing parents in the year before, so.
Right. No, I, no, I get it. I was just wondering.
I'm, I'm always interested in hearing a cost saving measure.
Hey, well, I have a little proposal. I actually print it out because I think it's sometimes easier for us to all be looking at the same piece of paper. Um, our athletic, our activities directors have been, we have really struggled this year with busing because of just our transportation. Our department is really struggling to, with busing. So, um, Matt and Tim Cronly have been working together and we are one of only a few districts in North Idaho who are not already doing this, but um, the proposal is to purchase, they're called fifteen passenger mini buses. And um, we've put on here some considerations for the board, but um, so some things that just have been recently occurring, um, because transportation is so tight, we've had situations where we had Timberlake High School softball girls were, had to leave school at noon to go sit at Majestic Field for three. We've had situations where we had Timberlake High School softball girls were had to leave school at noon to go sit at Majestic Field for three hours. To be there to be able to play their game, otherwise there was no transportation to get them there, so we've got kids losing out on a lot of instructional time.
Can can you explain the logistics of that or what, how, why? Why did that make sense?
Because of our double routing, they um they're they have a small window of time when they. Or they have only a certain number of drivers who are available and so on that particular day. They they couldn't get them there at when they needed to be there at two-thirty or whatever because they were running the routes, so they had to be able to drop them off early. And they needed.
To get back to do their, okay, okay.
So we had a situation where Lakeland High School was asked to arrive at Timberlake High School at twelve-thirty for a four o'clock softball game. For the same reason and the coaches are asking the question, what in the world did we do with the girls for four and a half hours, three and a half hours? Um and and they're just, my biggest concern is they're missing out on instructional time. The other thing to um to Trusty Jones' point earlier is that when we take kids to state. Our board policy says that we're not using our yellow buses if we go more than a certain number of miles, so every time we go to Boise. We are um hiring a a. Charter bus, which is up to eight thousand dollars for a round trip for one team. And Timberlake High School goes to state for just about everything, so it's a huge expense. But a lot of our teams are small enough that we could actually transport them on a a fifteen passenger minibus without having to pay that. That eight thousand dollar, like not, the entire golf team doesn't go down to state.
Way to qualify.
Right, um the, you know, the, I don't, the entire wrestling team doesn't necessarily always go because they have to qualify, right? Um when when we go down for basketball state, they're not taking varsity and J V, they're taking their team that's gonna play. So we could significantly cut costs just in state travel. But the bigger issue for us is just um. We've just had so many situations and that we're not, it's not gonna get easier with bus drivers and and. Our double routes are definitely causing problems for us, um kind of the unintended consequence of trying to make things better. Uh it's as far as activities goes, the double routing is really, really hard. Um especially since we don't have a lot of extra drivers, we just barely have enough to run the routes that we have, so. The minibus actually has seat belts on like regular yellow buses. And but because it's a fifteen uh passenger, um we don't have to have a C D L. So as long as coaches were comfortable driving the buses, um we wouldn't need a bus driver. So there would be the upfront cost and they did on the back. We we made some calls today, actually trying to get some actual quotes and you can't get anybody to talk to you, but. When we did some just checking online, a new minibus for spa- for sale um costs fifty thousand dollars or more and a used one is around twenty-five. So um Post Falls just bought, I think, two or three minibuses and they bought used and they um. They run great and they they are very happy with them, but we've had to actually cancel activities events for our kids because we can't, either we can't get them there or we can't get them home. So.
Well, so you're. How many athletes are on a football team?
Football, we could not necessarily use for this. We would have, there are some football, track. And um Lakeland High School swim team would not fit on a fifteen passenger bus.
Okay, so these buses would be being purchased for sports that maintain a roster of fifteen or less?
For the tra- for traveling.
For traveling, yeah, okay.
Ideally, what they were saying, I mean, if you look, ideally, we'd like to get to the point where we have two for each school because then. We could potentially take too many buses with us with a larger team and not have to charter a bus.
However, when you have uh dual sports, I mean, when you have sports, two two different sports on one day, who takes precedence and how is that determined?
Typically, when, like if the girls' basketball team is playing at home, the boys' basketball team is playing away. So they try to kind of schedule it in that way, I mean, it doesn't always happen that way.
Football and soccer in the fall.
Right.
Who takes precedence?
Uh well, that's a good question, I mean, but what it does do is it it's one less bus, right, that we're trying to get. And that's what we're actually trying to alleviate is some pressure on the transportation department. So if we, if our football team was going to uh Post Falls and the soccer team was needing to go to Kellogg.
So wouldn't football take a yellow bus anyways?
Right, so there are.
Football.
So that wouldn't be an issue.
Right, but so then um and volleyball, um we had, I asked that question today, I said, how, you know, what percentage are we, is it like fifty percent of our teams? And it, they just said it really depends on the event, because some tournaments for volleyball, they only take their varsity volleyball teams, but if you're actually playing. Like Timberlake High School is going to Kellogg, um they take their J V and their varsity teams because they play back-to-back and so it just, it's it. It would be dependent on that, but if we had. Two buses at each school in their, in their minds, we could take, easily take both teams and and then that's just one less team that the yellow buses have to transport.
Would, because I don't know, um I know like F F A competes and I know they don't have. Well, Timberlake may, but I know Lakeland doesn't have, at least I don't know from, or I don't believe so from when they presented, over fifteen participants. So they may be utilizing something like that?
Yes, so it's, I, so it's definitely not just athletics, this, we def- we, we talked at length about F F A, um our drama club.
Where he say kiddos doing solo under some.
B P A, um.
Student council.
Chris Jarstead, when his go- kids go to the Emmys over in Seattle, um they could use it, so there are lots of. It it would, it would definitely alleviate some stress on our transportation department, I think it would be less costly. And for sure, state, we we just wouldn't have to charter, I mean, for sure, we would definitely have to charter um a bus for football. But can't, with all their equipment and the the large team, um track. Uh but track, actually for state, you have to place in order to go to state, they don't take the whole track team, so you could potentially use a white bus for that too, so.
Yeah, I did, I haven't added it up, but my guess is we put out enough for charter buses this year, not counting football, uh to pay for one of these buses.
Oh, yeah, easily.
Yeah, they don't break down for eleven hours straight. That was terrible.
They're not guaranteed not to break down.
So and and it would help us to not have our kids missing quite so much school.
I would agree with that.
Did I hear you say that Post Falls bought used buses, where where did they get those, do you know?
Um I uh Matt tried to call the transportation director today to find, or the athletic director to find out and he hadn't heard back. But uh Western.
Western Bus Sales?
Yes, in Nampa is the name that we were given.
They're one of the, they're they're actually a school of bus vendor also, so they must, they went to Western or are those, it might be, you can actually.
It's not the one that, that's the.
Bryson, yeah, well, depending on the uh cost of them. If if you did one at a time, I mean, used ones, you. You could just, I mean, if they're gonna be twenty-five thousand apiece, you could just get three quotes and be within bid bid law. They got above a hundred thousand of a total order, then you have to be more formal. But you, if you just got a couple, you would be under that on used ones, it looks like.
And and I was really specific when I called this a fifteen passenger minibus because our I C R A M insurance will cover buses. They are, they are not in favor of us driving vans, for whatever reason, um I guess schools and buses go together.
I C R A M would be okay with these?
Yes, because Post Falls did their.
They're, they are asking, I C R A M is the first time I I mentioned this uh on our renewal. Where they asked if you had any vehicles like this, where they didn't ask before, so definitely more districts are doing it, my guess is they're probably will factor that into your rates. Something happened, I don't know the history behind it. It's definitely, there was an accident somewhere in the state of Idaho many years ago with like an athletic van. Because the practice in the state, nobody was doing it anymore, so I'm guessing that's what happened. Because when I was working for some Washington districts, we had like a a sixteen passenger van for like the golf team. You know, bec- you know, and it was sort of a more standard practice and when when I first started working for Coeur d'Alene and I looked at. Sort of the same thing and and I was. You know, talked to insurance, talked to other business manager, talked to other soup, and they went, oh, nobody does that, but I think now with the. Increased travel of the north to the south and some of those costs and really you're looking at.
Just the struggle to retain bus drivers.
We don't have you down, you can't do yellow bus travel and and that, but you still wanna provide this that, you know, sometimes you have to. Say this is a good option and uh and there are, you know, there's no perfect solution, right, but that. It it can be a good way to help the program, so.
Couple other questions related to this, do we get any reimbursement through I H S A A for travel costs?
No, no.
No, there's an undue burden on the northern schools because of the way they.
That goes to my second question, do they, do they have an honest rotation of location?
No.
No.
We gotta be honest with that.
We've tried, they just.
They ignore everything that they say.
The population percentage up here and so.
At one time, we finally prevailed and got a fairly decent rotation, wasn't a totally even rotation, but.
I think that.
I, it's a constant problem, I know, and you know, if we're not getting any reimbursement and we're expected to travel from here to Boise or Forteau constantly. The hardship is on us in terms of costs, that's why we're running into some of this.
Right, and there's no, there's no reimbursement from the state for any kind of athletics or activities, other than C T.
I know, from transportation, but.
They didn't have.
You're like the, what used to be at I H S A A.
Oh, like that, I don't know, I, we definitely, not anymore, I can tell you, not since I've been here, if I got a check.
So when they hold a state tournament, they collect all the, all the gate and keep it.
Well, I, I don't know, they might share some, if if some doves come back, it doesn't come at the district level and come back to like high, Timberlake High School or Lakeland High School. If if they have gotten some revenues at that level, I don't know.
I've never heard.
I don't think it's significant.
Probably not, but when you stop and think about that, they hold a a tournament at the Idaho Center, that one over. Napa, although, whoever, that's a huge tournament and they take in beaucoup bucks, you don't go to those tournaments for nothing.
Right.
And I guess uh the question, it begs the question, what does the I H S A do with all that money? Because that's, they're not that big an organization in terms of, you know, personnel costs and things like that.
I do not know.
Not only that, but they often have sponsors for those tournaments who also pay.
Idaho Darren.
Yeah.
I can, I will, I can follow up.
It's worthy of some investigation.
I'll follow up with the two A Ds and just see what they.
We do have those softball.
Didn't they have volleyball state up here this year in Coeur d'Alene?
But not for our schools, it was different.
I thought it was.
I don't, I think our team, maybe it was Florida, I thought they traveled.
They used to wrestle in Boise.
Yeah, it, we went through this big argument one time in the past and they finally agreed to allow the lesser tournament, the lesser sport tournaments to be up here. As long as football and basketball and everything was down south, but it's not, not an equitable situation.
And and what sticks in my head is I think that they, the agreement was that like every three years, something would come up here, um but.
For some sports, but never, never basketball.
Right.
Well, the argument is they don't have a facility big enough to handle the tournament up here, I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the argument.
So I, but I will follow up and ask um. What I H S A does with the gate money from state tournaments, does that get distributed back to schools, what does that look like, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, because the right thing to do, I'm talking about the right thing to do would be to support those schools who have to travel long distance to those tournaments.
Right, right, because not only are we paying for the the eight thousand dollars for the charter bus, but then we have to pay hotel costs.
Yeah.
And per D M for our kids to eat while they're gone.
Absolutely.
And the kids who live in Boise and are playing in Boise get to go home and sleep in their own bed at night and they get a home-cooked meal. And you know, they're not eating at McDonald's, so they're, yeah, there's definitely a disadvantage for North Idaho schools.
Who's uh who's the district one we're up for I H S A A?
Someone from Coeur d'Alene.
It could be Lisa.
It is not me. No, 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 I.
But that's the person that is gonna have to instigate some real movement.
It used to be Bob Ranals.
Yeah.
And then he's retired now and I don't know who took his spot, so I'll find out.
So, you know, anyway, I would favor doing this at some point.
So I will um just uh work with our clerk and the court chair to um find a an agenda where. There's some room and um.
Obviously, the problem is that we spend fifty or a hundred thousand dollars on this, you're gonna have that available for some other project, because it's a capital outlay.
Right, but it will help us, it could offset some of the money that Brian has budgeted in the supplies and mus- and materials or purchase services costs. In the general fund because we're not gonna pay eight thousand dollars to send our golf, two two golf kids to Boise. Yep. So we could offset it completely in one year.
I would also just, because I come from the transportation world, to um reach out to the mechanics and check to see what, how will this affect them in regards to. Backlogging of parts and repairs, you know, vehicles break down, so especially if you get a used vehicle, you know, what is that gonna look like for them? You know, as far as how much money are they gonna have to put forth in supplying their parts, you know, division of parts.
Touch base with them and let them know kind of what we're thinking and get some input from them.
I show district sec- where Terry's for District One is Larry Schwenke, S C H W E N.
Oh, it's Coeur d'Alene.
It's Coeur d'Alene, yep.
So it's District One, yeah.
That's what I think, didn't he just retire? Didn't Larry just retire?
I think he did.
Yeah, I don't, I think that might be a little bit outdated, but might be right. I thought he just retired either this year or last year. Might, maybe it was this year, I thought it was in the paper, but maybe it was this year, so maybe he is, but not much longer.
I know there's talk of him.
Yeah.
So when I bring this action item, um what is your pleasure, I think the. Best way to mitigate the the pressure on the transportation department would be two buses at each school and if we did use, so be, that would be a hundred thousand dollars. Or would you prefer that I come to you requesting just one bus?
That's assuming you could uh get them for point five or less. But if we, if we were to purchase three. You'd have one for each school and one could rotate according to.
Booster clubs are already talking about wrapping the buses and making them, you know, deck them out.
Well, they would each have, they would each have one to start with and then one J F D to be used.
Yeah, that's.
Between, yeah, between.
And we'd be under a hundred thousand.
And then we have the money to buy a a fourth one, then they can each have.
Later, okay, so I, for three buses. Thank you. Okay. I told you, I had an idea.
Oh, he's, yeah, Paul was gonna be done.
This is from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, well, he just, he's going to, moving to Lewiston.
This is silly.
But he's currently there right now, so.
So there's gonna be a vacancy.
Um they hired somebody? Oh, I am not looking at that position, no. I, I like talking about academics, I don't enjoy.
Oh, athletics is so much fun.
No. We spend so much time talking about athletics, so.
Yeah.
I am excited that this will be available for our activities groups too.
So we still need to talk about the fund balance.
Yes, we do.
So I knew that, you know, I anticipate the fund balances there. But I, you know, showing what I think we would have, but I didn't designate any of that for any projects or anything.
And Hayden Ross has counseled us every year during the audit that, in their opinion, the fund balance is at the minimum, even at sixteen percent.
Correct.
Yeah, that's been there. Every year we've heard that.
Yeah, that's the GFOA.
That's the auditor you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, auditors are ultra conservative in that respect, so. Give us a, give us a window. How much of the projected fund balance, if we were at eight percent, how much if we are at sixteen percent? And how much above sixteen percent in dollars?
Well, sixteen percent is where we were last year roughly, so was that?
Based on revenues, I'm just saying.
Seven something.
Yeah, I mean, so if you.
I'd like to see us anytime we do go end the year over the, the recommended sixteen percent, that that money gets put into a replacement fund.
I like that idea a lot.
And that's how we build our replacement fund is anytime, you know, just have it in a, literally in a policy, a fund balance policy that says anytime we are over, this is what we do with those funds. And it happens automatically, I mean, of course asked it be board approval, but it, but I, that's my suggestion.
So if you were to follow that suggestion, how many dollars are we talking about this year?
About seven percent.
So for, yeah, I mean, effectively, if you take sixteen percent times forty-one, three seventy-five, six seventy-four, six point eight million, so depending where it's, so roughly where we started this year is right around sixteen percent with our current expenditures. Obviously, that number changes every year based on your anticipated expenditures.
So we were at six point nine nine or whatever million, so seven million, which means.
We're a little bit above that sixteen percent.
That's seven million.
At the start, the seven million mark at the start of last year, but based on budget with additional expenditures with the increase to medical costs and salaries and benefits, you know, it's a, the number changes every year.
Sure, I understand that.
But that's a two point eight four million dollar difference. See that nine point eight four beginning fund balance up at the top?
Nine point four.
I mean, nine point four.
Saying that, that
It should be seven.
Two million dollars is above the sixteen percent level for this budget?
Two point four.
Correct, depending on where we end up with our, where we actually end in, we, you know, the final tally will be in October with the audit. So that's my estimate.
In terms of our budget work at this point, if we were to set aside two million dollars of that projected fund balance into your account, then you'd have that money for capital expenditure. Did you hear my doors?
Brian, what I'd like to know is with respect to the growth, getting up to where we're, so are we at, we're at twenty-three point oh six percent, okay?
That's an estimate of where we will start the new year.
Right, okay. Respecting, it's an estimate. What, the growth from sixteen to twenty-three, where did all those monies come from? Was it just S R money or was it?
It was, the two factors were, we did, you know, take advantage of some of those other dollars.
Right.
The second one was we built this year's budget on attendance.
Okay.
And they changed the rule mid-year and allowed us to do enrollment.
Okay.
That gave us over, if we would have stayed on attendance reporting and I looked at our revenues with our, we would only had two hundred and thirteen units. We probably would have been in the whole this year, seven hundred thousand dollars. If we kept with ADA, with the enrollment, that was like an additional three million dollars of revenues. And that's helping us have this two point five million dollar surplus.
Just remember, Brian also wrote the budget this, for this year to, to dip into the fund balance five hundred thousand dollars, so we need.
Right, I knew when it was initially proposed.
Some of those, right, so really that, I mean, the big, the biggest factor and especially ongoing for being healthy was really that enrollment rule. If they do backtrack on that, that would, we may have to, we may have to adjust what we're doing at the building level or even, I mean, with staffing, honestly, if that happened, but I don't think that's going to happen, but I wish I had a crystal ball.
So based on our discussion up to this point, if we were just to take the round figure, it actually needs to be about two and a half million, doesn't it? Off of that fund balance, transfer it, we've already discussed the fact that we'll gain about a million dollars because of what we're talking about with S R funds.
Potentially with salary.
With the offset there, yeah. So we would still be at the sixteen percent level plus heading toward next year. So two and a half is not unrealistic. Or maybe even a little more.
What are we doing with the unappropriated funds and all the other funds?
Well, that's, that's the thing is we, we should have a policy for each fund when we have.
Well, many of those funds.
Of what happened with those funds.
Some of them you can't do.
Yeah, some of those, they're special revenue funds and they have to stay within those. So if you, and we could go each by one, but all the federal dollars have to stay in the federal funds.
Right.
But there was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and three hundred and seventy-two thousand specifically that Brian pointed out, which equals five hundred and sixty-one thousand that Brian said we could use for capital projects that could, that, so, so that's.
No, I hear you, we just have in the unappropriated balances, nine million, seven thirty-five, six thirty-seven for the proposed budget for the general fund. And then we have three million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight seventy-seven of unappropriated balances in the all other funds.
Right, correct.
So.
So where those dollars are, the big ones, first, we talked about the plant facility fund. One million of that three million is part of that line that we're starting with. Even though we've sort of, so that's why I don't like the state form, they use unappropriated fund. There's better reporting that, you know, you have what your fund balance is at the start and instead of call it inappropriate, you might have it committed, assigned, reserved, there's restricted, there's different accounting terms that I think better. But regardless, given that for, we have a million in the plant facility fund that we're going to start July one with and spend it down, most of it over the summer.
Okay, and that gives us that hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
We have six hundred and seventy-two thousand in the bus fund, but, you know, four hundred and twenty of that is sort of dedicated for the buses that should arrive in August. We have the other fund that has a, a balance is our, our debt service fund, which is where we're making our final payments on our, effectively our mortgage or last bonds. And we're going to start the year with two million dollars in our debt service fund. And we will have, we'll collect about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars of revenues. Our, we're going to have one point five million dollars in payments, so that two million fund balance next year is going to go down to one point five. We'll have one more year of collections of about the same thing and then our bonds will be paid off. So we're, we're whittling that fund as, we're collecting less than what our mortgage payment is right now because we have that balance. And so some of those other funds you see are for those dollars.
They're already appropriated for something.
Yeah, I guess I'm not following you because I do see the debt retirement on here for the one point four six eight on its own line item.
Correct, that's the expenditure. We're starting, if you look on this page. The debt service fund itself, the start balance is at, we're at, I'm estimating to start at about two million dollars that will be in there. Because our, our one point five million dollar payment is due in August. So we have to have that money because we don't collect the property taxes in time. So there's a, is a cash flow issue, so we have to have those monies collected. We will then make that payment, then about the same time we're making that payment and literally right, doing the wire transfer, we collect additional property taxes, half of them from June in the summer and the other half come in when people pay in January. And so then we'll end the year with about one point five million and again have enough to make that payment the next year. And then we're almost done with our, we will, our bonds will be wrapping up in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So then what you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying to bring that debt retirement on the proposed budget down to one point four six eight, you are taking the funds out of the unappropriated balance that's under all other funds to do that?
Part, no, all other funds just includes all these other funds combined together.
Okay.
So debt service is part of that, it's one of the other funds.
Even though it's its own line item.
The only reason it has its own line item is that on the expenditure side, the expenditure of debt is a different I Farm's code than any other expenditure and that's why it shows up by itself. So the state asks us that when you officially are doing principal and interest on voted debt, that that is coded differently. So that's why it shows up differently than any other expenditure. So it is part of the expenditures in the debt service fund, that one point four six eight, that's not, that's, it's just an expenditure. It's a big expenditure, but that's what it is. And it's its own line by the state form, that's where it goes. So you can see that debt retirement is object number six hundred. The only objects in six hundred in the way we code expenditures is debt retirement. So that's where, that's why it's its own line because that's how the state asks us to do the accounting.
Right, but my question to you was, I know there's, there's a word thing that you think it should be labeled something else, but we have three million, three eighty-six, eight seventy-seven in unappropriated balances on the proposed budget for all other funds.
Oh, that would be, that unappropriated balances at the end is going to be at the end of the year, how much money will be left based on this budget in all those other funds? So if you look, our beginning balance is six point two million dollars on all other funds. So if you took all our other funds right now, at least my estimate, that we have actually six point two. At the end of the year, we're going to have three point three, so we're actually spending three million dollars more than we're taking in in other funds next year. That's what that represents. So that first, that beginning balance is the start, if you want to say the start of the unappropriate funds, it's your, it's your fund balance of all those other funds. And we're going to end at three point three because, for example, we're going to spend a million dollars in the plant facility fund but have no revenues because we already have the money there. So those funds are spent, but we have no revenues, so that's why those balances will be going down.
Okay, okay. I think I understand what you're saying.
Well, and these are, you know, these aren't my favorite forms, they're the, the state required fund like this, we have to send into the state, the second one with the blue, I mean, that.
No, and I, I get.
And I, no, because I understand where you're coming from.
I just, I, I mean, I don't, you could create your own little form, it doesn't have to be a state form. See, for people like me to understand, but that's okay.
Well, and that's why I tried to break it down with each one, saying this is where we're starting and this is where we'll end.
And you basically start out the year with the beginning balances, you know, you have a series of revenues that come in and a series of expenditures that go out. And the difference between beginning revenue and revenue taken in less the expenditures is that three point three for whole funds. Your question is what's in that three point three?
So why did we?
My question is, is it appears that we have, based on the general fund, when you come down to unappropriated balances, that in a sense, for not using the right language, is leftover money or money that's increasing where we're at.
And you hear fund balance.
Yes. So the three million, three eight six to me is, is, is a parallel. But what I hear him saying is out of all of all the other funds at the end of the year, we're going to end with the three million, three eight six. So that I understand.
And some of those dollars are actually encumbered and just haven't been spent yet, correct?
Well, we're, we're starting, we're starting at six, for other funds, what we're looking at the funds, we're, we're starting at six point two. And that's our beginning balance of all those other funds.
Right.
And when all those other funds, when we spend down, assuming they come in, we're going to end at three point three. So we're actually spending more than we're taking in. So that's what that shows. So that unappropriated balance, as opposed to using that term with the state form, we could call it end balance. In fact, that's, I, I try to do that on these ones, I call it the total ending fund balance. And so, for example, in the debt service fund, we're starting with two million, we're going to bring in nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. So we have available just a little over three million dollars when you add the revenues. But with our debt service payment of one point four six eight million, we're going to take in five hundred thousand dollars less than what we spent. We're, so we'll still end at one point five million and still, but we're starting, effectively our, our account to pay our mortgage is starting to, to, to go down.
Dwindle down.
Dwindle down as, as our, as our obligations for that mortgage go away.
And what's, you know, difficult to understand is when you're looking at the other funds, I don't know, how many we got? Ten, twelve, fifteen?
We have.
And each, each one of those have a little bit of an ending balance.
And the, and the debt services one, I think Brian, you were saying we have to keep a larger fund balance there because of the cash flow issue. So we can't spend that three point, however, we need to have that there.
Right.
Yeah.
Which, this year, we started the all other funds with six point two. Next year, we'll start the fund balance for the all other funds with three point three six. We're spending twelve million, two eighty-seven because we're incoming fifteen million, we're, we're expending twelve million.
Yeah, we have, we'll put count like twenty other funds outside the general fund.
Yeah, it's a bunch, I do that, I never counted them up, but.
They've been, you know, every time some of these federal programs, they add a new fund for it and then the state,
Categorical.
The state categorical funds, like state technology, they wanted its own fund out of the general fund. Literacy is out of the general fund, they wanted that, so they keep creating these, a lot of the funds.
Is there a reports tied to the money that comes from the state?
We're running out of numbers, actually, the way they, they've done it, we, they're going to have to, they might have to
Two point nine.
Go to, instead of, yeah, they're going to have to add a digit if they keep adding funds.
All right. Everybody's heads are hurting. Everybody's heads are hurting, I can tell.
So can I ask you a question trustee Bane?
Maybe.
Um, do I have to answer? Well, just based on your suggestion about adding language to the policy. Um, would it be prudent for Brian to show in the budget? A transfer of the money you're talking about to a, an account for capital projects? So that we're in line with what you're wanting to do? Or is he okay to leave the budget the way it's written, showing the, the, the larger fund balance?
It seems more transparent to me that we make that decision and, and the budget that the board approves on the fifteenth reflects that.
Desire.
The thing is, we don't, we are gonna know what that amount. I mean, we can do the proposed amount, but we don't know what that amount's gonna.
What if you go a percentage?
That's the problem with having a policy is. Policies in effect, but you don't know what the answer to it is, and so. Almost year by year. You can establish a precedent, I guess, by doing what we're talking about doing here.
It, it would show capacity and budget for it and.
Yeah.
Certainly could. Often on some type of these transfers or big ones. For example. When the board approves us, we've traditionally transferred two hundred twenty five thousand from the plant facility fund to the bus fund, just to keep buying some buses. The board sees that budget and so we haven't gone back to the board asking for the transfer because the budget was approved. But something big like what you're talking about, you know, certainly could be an action item or coming to the board saying that here is. Where we ended budget. Let's say for argument's sake, we budgeted two million dollars. And let's say it came into two point three five. Certainly, I mean, budget is never gonna be exact, right? But you, you sort of have it, and so actuals will vary a little bit different than budget, but. It'd be more in the ballpark.
Right, and this is gonna be an end of, end of year transfer rather than beginning of the next year.
So that would be October after the audit, so we could have an action item.
Well, I don't know that it would even need to be after the audit, I mean, you're gonna.
It wouldn't be, I mean, at that point, since probably some of the big projects you do aren't gonna hit until honestly. A little later in the year, when you made the transfer, if you did it next year, that would be fine.
Yes.
But what if the, what if the board wanted to, sorry, what if the board wanted to. Make the decision to fix the doors at Lakeland Middle School? Now, do you just authorize the use of the fund balance is how you would do that?
Well, you would, you would, you, I mean, that's not gonna be our only capital expenditure funding either. That's more gonna be stuff, you know, my thought is replacement for facilities or.
So you're thinking instead of a bond, you're thinking building a fund to.
Well, I don't think that it's a bad idea just to.
Sorry, I thought you were thinking about maintenance.
It could, we can do it either way, it's not.
I, I just think we would be more transparent. With the public. On two counts, one is if we make the transfer, for example, when we get to this point and we have a firm look at the budget. Let's say we transfer two point seven five million. Now. At least with the projections we have, that's gonna put us under the sixteen percent mark. So in terms of transparency to the public, that item is taken care of. In other words, we're not gonna show a fund balance that exceeds our policy when the thing gets published, right? And. Then we have the money in the fund that you're talking about and we can expand out of that fund as we feel the need as we go forward.
Right, yeah.
So those are the two issues that I see.
So you are suggesting that we. Transfer that and, and so that you're approving a budget that doesn't show the large fund balance? So that we're staying within our policy?
As long as you're not jeopardizing, you know, your, your total fund balance.
Well, no, and, and you definitely are still within your policy.
Yeah.
Well, even if you left it there and transferred later, what the policy says is that if you get above that. The board should use those funds for one-time expenditures. So by, if, even if you do the transfer when you, later when the audit comes in. And it's in budget with a, a transfer line item of, let's say, two point seven five is a budgeted transfer number. And then when you know what it is, you do the actuals, you are following your policy.
Yeah, yeah, I've never heard, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I, I'm thinking back to when Dave was out campaigning and he said, how come that fund balance is as big as it is? When it exceeds the board's policy? And so, you know, how do you have an answer for that? Unless you do something which is fairly straightforward and concrete. And I guess that's, that's where I'm headed.
Well, at some point, it might exceed the board policy, but typically what happens come August, that won't be the case. In fact, last year, we ran a huge deficit. A couple million dollars, I think it was last year, my last year before. Um, so that's it, but I have a question, the twenty three point oh six percent, Rosetta, can you scroll? Yeah, right there, so where is that percentage coming from, how is that calculated?
It should be. The beginning fund balance divided by anticipated expenditures. Of the forty one, one, two, four, five, three, seven.
Oh, at the bottom. So the twenty three oh six, the nine, four, eight, four, five and the twenty three for six, how did the twenty three percent? Get calculated?
The nine million, four hundred and eighty four thousand divided by the forty one million, one hundred and twenty four thousand.
Right.
Is twenty three.
Is twenty three point oh six and then the twenty three point six seven is the ending fund balance of nine, seven, three, five, six, three, seven, divided by the same expenditure amount as a guess.
That, that was the question that was trying to be answered a little while ago.
Yeah. I was a little lost.
Sure.
I mentioned that. Okay. It's my new math calculator. So I knew I wasn't doing something right, I just couldn't quite figure it out, okay.
Inhales.
Well, you know, we were sitting in that one class learning about math.
That it?
No, it's never it, Dave.
I just wonder.
Don't you, you don't love hanging out with us yet?
I do. I just like my house.
You can be both, dude.
Maybe we can set it up with your recliner in here for.
Zoom in.
It sucks. It, it.
It's not fun to be the only person.
Awful, I got here half of what you guys were saying.
Yeah. It's just harder to interact when you're face to face.
And obviously, everything we've tentatively agreed to in the negotiated agreement is encompassed into the budget that is laid out. Yeah, as I was trying to estimate salaries and benefits, I mean, some of that is your best guess, there's a lot of moving factors with. I mean, the people who are in the seats right now, if they, if everybody stayed and didn't retire, resign or. And we, we added no new people, then it's a lot easier, but obviously. Some of that I use averages on some of the, so we know we're having, you know, some. You know, some attrition and some people leaving for resigning and, or, you know, had put in their time and they're retiring. So a lot, I will just use an average, our average teacher, we might hire a. You know, sometimes you do hire a veteran and they're high on the salary schedule, sometimes you hire a, a beginning teacher and they're low. So I, I sort of try to.
It averages out.
It sort of averages out in the, in the big picture. You know, ironically, and then see that affects our revenues. Because our revenues, part of, you know, the formula is the more experienced. Teachers you have, they, they're higher on the career ladder salary schedule, which will get paid off of, so you get, you earn more dollars. So they're actually. And it's just, that's why form, you know, formulas and people get confused, and so people will say sometimes like, well, you hired. Some new teachers. But that's okay, cause you can get reimbursement from the state from them and so there's no cost. Actually. You can hire new teachers and have more teachers on staff. And you get less money. Because they pay you on a weighted average. And so now I've added three, let's say, new teachers and they're at the lower end, they lowered my weighted average. I get funded by how many teachers based on student enrollment, it's just a number. So if I have more teachers than what the state funds anyway. I actually can get my weighted average, I actually make less money even though I hired three new teachers, it's actually a loss. With the way the formula works. It, it doesn't seem right, but that's how, it's a formula.
Explain weighted average works if you were.
So the, a, if a teacher. Is a first-year teacher. And they are on the career ladder, I think the beginning salary funded for a beginning teacher is forty two thousand five hundred. Let's say it's forty two thousand five hundred, it's a right around there, it might be forty three oh three hundred, but forty two thousand five hundred. If you're at the top of the career ladder. You're getting about fifty five thousand. So, so the state salary schedule. For that individual. So if we only have two teachers and one was forty two, fifty five, that they're gonna fund me is the average of those two. So we have two hundred and ninety teachers, it's the average of all those teachers and where they land on the, on the career ladder. And, and that's, that's the number, so. Part of estimating the revenues. Is you take your staff and you think, where do you think they're gonna land on the career ladder? And then. On the staff that there's attrition. You know, I sort of take them off the board and then I just, I put a few in the beginning, a few, a few in the middle and a few in the. Experience, a little more in the beginning, cause that seems to be what we're getting. Um, and then you're missing a little bit on the low side, which is better, but it still is, you know, an educated guess.
Okay, thank you.
Well, in looking at the salary schedule, cause that was attached as well. I am curious. What is a, what is the difference from this? Shadow salary scale and then the salary scale, I mean, what's?
There was a, a couple years ago, so there's an aspect of, and, and Brooke might be able to explain it better, but I'll do my first shot and then we'll go from there. So there's, part of Idaho law is that. If on a teacher's primary base contract. And if they're an experienced teacher, that they have a continuing contract, they're past their probationary status, so usually year four. That if. If our contract with them, it's not what we get funded, but our contract with them was fifty thousand dollars. The next year, we cannot pay them forty nine, we have to pay them at least what they earned the previous year, that's state law.
Okay.
It's called property rights. Another aspect of the law is that they wrote in legislation is that there's a, a minimum of what you can pay a teacher. So. The salary schedule for the career ladder now, so there's a state minimum, so that our, I can't have my teacher start at thirty five, but the state give me forty two, five for a first-year teacher. I have to at least give them forty two, five.
Right. Forty two, one twenty.
Forty two, one twenty. And so. With the career ladder, you have what they call the residency ladder, residency rung. And professional rung and now advanced professional rung. And you're a, you're step one, two, three, then you're step one, two, three, four, five on the, on the professional. So when the, this legislation came out a couple years ago and they, on some of the career ladder. They. Had also a minimum that if you're on the professional rung, you had to pay that minimum. So what, what happened to us is, let's say that we had a. First-year teacher. Who comes from out of state and has. Professional experience? I don't know, and, but we ended up having to pay them that, there was, I mean, we had like a. The, the. Anderson Julian Hull attorneys given a recommendation saying that if you have someone's professional status, you gotta pay them the second minimum, the higher. And I'll let Brooke, I'm not explaining it well, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, when we started this a few years ago in the career ladder, it came out in law and I think I cited, cited the statute on that. Schedule in there. Um, we do have a few people, um, our salary schedule wasn't on that upper left-hand corner. Wasn't anywhere near where it was supposed to be when they did this career ladder, they had made a significant increase in those cells. So we have people that if they hit their fourth year and were in a professional rung, the minimum that they could make, for example, this year. Effective, uh. July twenty twenty two is forty three thousand, four hundred and eighty eight is the very minimum that they can make. But if you look at our regular schedule, we're not there yet, we haven't caught up based off of the COLAs. So we have to do that shadow and then the rest of the cells, if you look at the rest of the cells, they're comparable to the other one. So once they fall off of that, then they move over to the regular schedule until we can get caught up. And we're hoping maybe we'll be caught up maybe within the next year or two, I don't know, depending on what our COLAs are, then we can get rid of that shadow schedule. Does that help?
Okay, so in those first.
Go ahead.
In the, in those first eight cells where the numbers all the same. We have to pay the teacher according to the shadow.
Yeah, according to the state statute, yeah.
And, and over time, the thing will ripple up.
Yeah.
It should go away, yeah, it was really. So we ended up having. Teachers the year that it happened. Who, who, because they. They were only, we were paying them as a, as a bachelor, a BA, bachelors with one-year experience on our salary schedule. But because maybe they went, came from out of state.
No, it was just, it was just because this, our schedule up in that upper left hand was lower than, and then all of a sudden the state did this big jump. And that got, remember that got some of the veteran people, feathers all ruffled up. And so that's when we went into IBB the next year and we, um, ended up giving them a little bit more of a boost in that right-hand corner. Because the, the state had funded so much in that upper left-hand corner. So basically, it's, what this is, is just allowing us to catch up to the state minimum requirements if you they are on a professional rung.
So prior to that, the other thing that kind of exacerbated all of this is that our, our old salary schedule. Had like cells where for three years, you stayed at the same rate, especially at the top right-hand, left-hand corner. And, and, and then through the recession, this district chose not to riff anybody. Instead, they chose to just freeze everybody on the salary schedule and not, not let people step down or move over. Um, or increase the salary, that was how we kept, we maintained our full staff. So through the recession, we had teachers who were in that, that same cell and it, and. They, because they didn't get to step, they actually ended up, some of them were in there five and six years. And because by the time they, we unfroze the salary schedule and they got to start stepping down, they still had to get, it was three years in that same cell and so. When we put the money into unfreezing, we couldn't do a lot with the salaries at the top end. Just because of the cost of, of moving everybody, so. Their focus was just on, on steps and lanes, so.
If you hire a, a teacher coming into the district on, let's say, step. Three of the BA column. But this thing doesn't ripple that far in the next year, or they still have that, when they go to step four, it's the same dollar amount, so are they at the same dollar amount year after year in that instance?
Okay, so let's say I have a person that comes in and they're at a BA step three. and they're at a BA step three. But they're only in R three. Do you say, they have a residential three? So they, essentially, they're gonna be residential on rung, or on rung or residential three. They would remain on the regular schedule.
Because we're above the residency funding.
Mm-hmm. So, but let's say I have somebody that has, um, comes in and they have uh, four years of experience, and they're a professional one, according to the state, then I'm gonna have to put them on that shadow schedule, because the minimum amount I can pay them is that forty-three something. I can't pay them what is up in our upper left hand. So we just, we have to wait, we just have to wait for it to catch up, is all.
So there was debates on, do you have to do that, or you can say, no, we're just paying the state minimum? And there was, you know, information back that the legislature said, no, we never intended to keep, to, to have two minimums. Because that's effectively what happened. There's a residency minimum and a professional one minimum now. They said, we never intended that, but regardless.
And there's an advanced, if you look, if you look at the career ladder.
If the attorneys looked at it, that's what.
There is minimums that you can pay for your residential, and for your professional, and for your advanced professional.
Is that, is that on the sheet?
There is, if you look up Idaho State Statute, title thirty-three, chapter ten, it's title thirty-three one zero zero four B.
But there, there's not a whole lot of people on the shadow schedule, and we should outgrow it in a couple of years.
Keep trying, it'll work eventually.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
It's sort of, you know. So when we first went to it, yeah, you could have a teacher that was on the shadow schedule, and they go down, and they, they would stay the same.
Stay the same, that was, that was my question.
Correct, they could. But if the state changes
The minimum.
The minimum, then we reflect that change.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
It's thirty, thirty-three dash one zero zero four B.
But they theoretically could get caught in the minimum.
Right, or they go get twelve credits, they move across on our salary schedule.
Right, but now get a little more.
So if you scroll down
Right.
In, in the, it's like towards the middle of the statute.
Residency, professional, advanced.
Yeah.
They're starting.
Exactly, so the July one, it's, uh, the professional is kind of where we had the issue, because we, we fund above the residential, as you can see. Okay, so we're above that. But we weren't above the professional.
Scroll down, moves in.
Okay, so that's why we have that.
Just scroll. Yeah, it's all the way down, there you go. A little bit higher up. Nope, down, sorry.
So you can see, yeah, all of this.
It's that block that we're looking at. Yeah, because there's a lot of confusion, um, as to what Lakeland's paying, because people are bringing up our pay scale and saying, well, I'm not gonna go there for four years at forty thousand. I just had this conversation with somebody, and I said, no, we, we don't pay that, and, uh, they're like, yeah, I just looked at the website, it's only forty thousand, and like.
Well, and so it does, it depends on what, where they're placed. Like, if they're fresh out of college, I mean, so the old one.
This was somebody with experience, nearly five years, and they're like, I'm not applying there, it's only forty thousand dollars.
No, it is not based off of that. So, and what it's based off of, also in our negotiated agreement, you see that we give up to twelve years of experience. So they could land on a step thirteen, you know, if they come in with, you know, all that experience. And then, plus then, we count credits after the credential. And so then that's where they're placed on the column. And then if the state, if they've been in the state, then they should be placed on the career ladder. And so we're, they're placed accordingly. I mean, if they're a professional on the professional rung, and they're coming in, then we have to pay them, you know, of course, that minimum. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Yeah, I told him to ask, because what they were, I think, yeah, I told him to ask you, actually, because what they were looking at and what I was trying to explain, and they're like, no, no, it really is like.
Yeah, if they, no, if they want to apply, just have them, they're confused, have them get ahold of me.
Yeah, well, the other, well, I mean, this is sort of sidelined, but the other thing is, is I've talked to probably five people that you sort in the district that would like to come back, but the understanding in North Idaho is that once you leave Lakeland, you're never hired again. So we need to fix that.
We actually are starting that process, because we are recommending a hire to who used to be at Lakeland High School and went to post.
Well, that's what I told them.
And that depends on the circumstances. I mean, of course, if they were, you know.
Right, 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 no, 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 yeah, they just were under the impression that this was
Yeah, no, we don't.
A policy within the last few years. I said, no, we, there was just somebody that came through and
Yeah, no.
That's not.
One-way valve.
We want, now, we want our good people back.
Yeah.
There's another one who's applying, and I'm praying we have a position for her, because she's amazing. She left and then is wanting to come back. What is, what is nice to hear is both of these teachers left for different reasons.
And they regret.
And they immediately regretted leaving, so.
So, yeah, our salary schedule, respecting that the shadow schedule is in place for those on the professional rung or professional track.
Rung, they're doing well, yeah. And then they're in that little cluster of cells right there.
They're in that little cluster of cells. So would it be my understanding that eventually our salary schedule is going to be reflective of the shadow schedule, so that when we get there, we're there?
Yeah, we'll probably get about, and then I, I cannot wait to get rid of that little schedule.
Yeah, I was like, what, it's this and why?
Yeah.
I remember when they did that, though, how upset all the teachers were, because they just got bypassed for the, this, when the state, you know, changed the, the salary. You know, all those that were already in the profession just sort of.
And just, and just so you're aware, it affects approximately about twenty teachers right now that I have on that shadow schedule. And until we get caught up, I'll have some that come off and go onto the regular, and some that are gonna go on it until we get caught up. So it does average about twenty teachers.
It's only about seventy, eight percent, I mean, it's most people aren't on it.
Less than ten percent.
Less than ten, whatever it is, yeah.
I could just imagine it's just more of a headache to constantly track all this.
It's a blast. Part of their packet is, I did this form, and it's basically called a career ladder packet, so I can determine like how many out of state, um, years of experience and in-state. There's all these wacky laws regarding our out-of-state, and hopefully we can get those rectified, because the, those that were hired prior to twenty-twenty didn't count, their out-of-state of experience didn't count. So, like, I had a, yeah, so I have this amazing, amazing teacher that had, you know, almost twenty years of experience out of state, and we couldn't count, count that experience as far as the, you know, advanced professional endorsement. And then, but then twenty-twenty, we're hiring people, and now all of a sudden we're able to count that, and it wasn't fair to those teachers, so now they've come up with a remedy, and they're gonna be rolling that out, so hopefully I can, you know, get our people there taken care of. Legislation, when they do these big things, I mean, let the, the wording in legislation, they think they're helping, and sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, they don't always know what the, what the implementation side looks like, and they they lack.
Yep, exactly.
So I know that traditionally, we have, or I should say, not traditionally, historically, we have had, um, teachers with longevity in our district. Do you know where we're sitting right now with the ratio of that, like?
So, just to give you an idea, I was showing Lisa this, uh, today, just like I told you, I was kind of working on, um, contracts. And today, I found I have a hundred and ninety-nine renewable contracts that I'm doing, and the average for all of those is sixty-one thousand four hundred and sixty is the average salary. And then, um, category three people, I don't have very many. Um, I have actually, well, the average on that is forty-four one oh five, and then I have seven people on there. And then my category twos, and these are all just returning people, this doesn't include any of my new people. I have on category twos so far, uh, that are returning, um, fifty-five people.
Okay.
So they're people that we hired last year and are coming back this year. That's fifty-five.
Okay.
Are you familiar with those, those categories?
Well, the category two, so the category one is a brand-new teacher?
So, no, category one, they are, are teachers with absolutely no property rights. They come in, they're hired after August first.
So you could have Brooke and I sitting side by side. Brooke gets hired on July thirty-first, she's a category two.
Year one.
Year one, and because I get hired on August second, I'm a category one. So category one people have zero property rights. By law, at the end of the year, their job ends. That position has to be opened, they're welcome to apply.
Right.
But we can't just say, we love you, and we're gonna keep you. Can't do that. Category twos, um, are people who were hired prior to August first. So you, so you have a category two first year. And then the next year, they're a category two second year. So category twos have no property rights. So at the end of the year, if you're a category two, and it's not a good fit, all by law, all we have to do is provide you a reason, a written reason as to why we're not gonna rehire you. And there's no due process at all. Then the third year of employment is a category three. And the category three, there's some property rights, um, not to the same level as somebody who's a renewable contract, but they, they definitely, um, we are obligated to provide a, a, a period of improvement, and we have to give them written notice that they're insufficient in some areas or deficient skills. And we have to write an improvement plan, and so there are things we have to do to, to allow them to show that they can grow. So and then you move, in your fourth year with the district, you, you go to a renewable contract.
And on a cap three, um, there are some of those, uh, property rights. Uh, but at the end of the year, they, you don't need to do a due process hearing with them. Anybody that you're terminating, like in renewables, you always, if they request a due process hearing, it doesn't matter if it's summertime or whatever, you always have to do that due process hearing. Um, and then in the school year, if you are trying to terminate a teacher, they, no matter what category, they're allowed a due process hearing, if they choose.
If, if you're doing it during the school year.
Yes.
There has to be some pretty extreme circumstances for us to say we're in terminate in the middle of the school year.
So we really, really keep an eye on our folks, uh, we keep an eye on them all the time. But for sure, you know, in those earlier years.
And the categories have nothing to do with years of teaching experience, because if you're brand-new to Idaho, coming from California, and we hire you on June thirtieth, you're a category two teacher.
Yeah, and we hired somebody out of Coeur d'Alene last year who had like, I think, you know, sixteen years of experience, and it was after August one, so they were a category one. So.
Interesting.
The category one legislation was really put in place to kind of try to help school districts, recognizing that when you're hiring that late in the year, you may not be getting
Prime candidates.
Prime candidates, although I would tell you, I was hired after August first. I'm still here. Still, there are some good people out there, too, but, um, it does give the, uh, districts the opportunity to just open the position, and, and if that person, if they like the person, then they can rehire them.
Is your reading?
What, so whether I'm not, whether or not a person is a category one hired after August or hired in June, placing them in a category two position, as far as, uh, liability within the district, there isn't.
It's relatively the same. Category two person, we just have to put in writing that we're not hiring you back for this reason.
Okay. And they just give them a little bit more, and like, even our, uh, cat ones, um, our cat ones from last year.
Did you fall down?
Our cat ones from last year don't go cat one, year one, they actually jump to cat two, year two.
Okay.
And then next year, they'll go, they'll hit the third.
So they don't have to start at cat two?
No, you're right.
Well, I just, I know that there's, since I've been on the board, there's been this push that we don't do any hiring until August to promote that whole, you're just a cat one, which I don't think it's effective for our district whatsoever, because we're constantly scrambling.
Well, and you don't, to, to me, it's the quality hiring. We want quality teachers.
That's the real issue.
And so we're doing, we're doing the best we can. I mean, it's hard to recruit right now. And we have a lot of people going out, so we're definitely competitive in our hiring and getting that going right now, and I mean, I have, I have I have new kids that just came out of college that, that we're hiring, and I have a stack of files where I'm gonna be on them to make sure they have their certificate, because they're so new.
Right.
And so that's just where we are right now.
The other thing that, with regard to where we are right now, we are, we asked our principals to add a question to the interview process that says, do you have housing? Because we have hired people, they've accepted the job, and then they get here and realize they can't find any place to live, and they're rescinding their, they're backing out of their contracts. So we're asking the question ahead of time, do you, have you already secured housing?
Well, not backing out of contracts, but backing out of positions.
Right, they haven't signed the contract.
Not accepting the position.
Accepting and then saying, I can't come. So that's happened to us several times with really quality people.
Okay.
Um, but housing is a huge issue.
I mean, we're not supplying housing.
We, yeah, it'd be nice if we could, but like.
For those first-year.
Where would we, I mean, it would be lovely to have Lakeland condominiums, you know, for Lakeland School District.
If you read that thing I sent you the other day, uh, talking about some federal assistance
Yes.
for housing for first responders and teachers.
But there's no place.
It's down the road a ways.
Right, but the problem is, is there's nothing open.
There's nothing. Even with all the apartments.
Yeah, it's just crazy. There's a waiting list.
So now there's RV parks.
Actually, I just found out that that's not happening.
Oh, okay.
Person, the person wasn't able to buy the properties, so that RV park.
Well, that would, that would particularly.
That's interesting.
They tried to buy the property, and I don't know if they just couldn't get the funding to buy it. Um, but, but it fell through, because they, they didn't have the needs to buy the property.
City has an opportunity to redeem themselves.
Are you making fun of me? It would have been nice to have had this upcoming twenty-two, twenty-three classified salary, classified admin salary matrix. We have the twenty-one, twenty-two.
So that, there, I don't have a twenty-two, twenty-three, those are all, those are all twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's what, that's just what they're, um, because.
Well, was there a cost of living increase to the classified admin?
Only if the board approves the negotiated agreement, so we can't do anything until that approval's done. But it'll, the, our practice has been that, um, that whatever increase goes on the teacher's salary schedule, um, goes across all of the salary schedules. So it would be a four percent increase.
We have, we have precedent for that, but it's not dictated otherwise.
Right, it's just past practice.
So all of the, the, the salary schedules, the classified, the, uh, classified admin and the admin, um, salary schedules will have to go on for board approval at the June meeting. And so I think that's why Lisa wanted some discussion.
Yeah, just to have opportunity for you to have eyes on, um, at least what it looks like right now, recognizing that it will show increases um, dependent, obviously, on board action on Thursday, which I guess is tomorrow.
Yeah, so, Ray, we don't, I guess what I, which I don't know if it's possible. Anything is possible, but but if we are basing, uh, certified administration, classified administration, classified, and, um, if we're, we're basing everything else growth-wise off of the negotiated agreement, I'd like to see what that is. Because looking at these numbers, unless I take and calculate the four percent, I'm not gonna know.
Right.
So, you're indicating that in June, you will present a new salary schedule.
Correct, and I, I'm gonna generate that relatively quickly.
If, once the board approves the IBB, the negotiated agreement, we can, we can generate that and send them to you so you have them ahead of time to look at, so you can just see the dollar amounts.
Okay.
It's all about the formulas, right?
Yeah.
And just what you guys...
Spreadsheet and copy and paste is a beautiful thing.
Drop and drag.
Right, there you go.
I love spreadsheets. I was in them all day today. I was in heaven.
Can we, um, there are a couple of things I just wanted to get some input from the board on prior to us bringing... So, my intention in bringing these was not so much about what the money, knowing that that was gonna change, but, um, I, I have, I just have some thoughts about a little bit of tweaking. So, one of the things that, um, has, that I, that came up in my interview from the board was the conversation about stipends and the large dollar amount that we spend in stipends. Some of those stipends are extra days because we don't have people in the right places on these salary schedules, and so, instead of fixing the salary schedule, we're just adding the stipend. So, what I would like to do is, um, talk a little bit about some of the changes that might help with some of those stipends. Um, so if we start with the, um, the certified administrator salary matrix.
Okay.
Um...
Certified administrator?
Yes, please. Uh, when you look at the assistant superintendent, federal programs director, um, we are significantly behind the, the, um, our neighboring districts with what we're paying our assistant principal, or assistant superintendent. Um, and being the second in charge of the district, um, with regard to all of the responsibilities that come with that, I just feel really strongly that the assistant superintendent should be the second highest-paid person in the district. So, um, that's the only column where I would like to just do a little bit of tweaking to, to bring some of those numbers into alignment. So, for example, um, I'm currently on step eight of that, um, so you can see that dollar amount, and, um, uh, an assistant superintendent in Post Falls who's in year probably four or five over there is at, um, one-twenty, so...
Actually, both are.
Yeah, so, so, um, we're just a little bit out of whack. So, with some, um, with permission, I would just like to kind of add a little bit to that particular column to get that person, whoever that's going to be, kind of more in line with where that should be. And the other thought I have is, um, if you look at our activities directors, they're on a two-hundred-and-twenty-day contract, and when you look at how much our middle-level principal is making, um, and you look at, and I, and you, so, the activities director, it's showing a two-hundred-and-twenty-day contract. So, five days more, and they're making seven thousand dollars less, and they work pretty much every weekend, four to five nights a week, and the level, and they're supervising as many staff as our assistant principals are. Now, they're not dealing with student discipline, but they are definitely dealing with parents. Um, so, I would like us to have them be this, at the same daily rate of pay as the middle-school principal, and then, uh, their, um, pay would adjust because they would have a, a larger number of days on their contract. And I'm open to feedback on that.
Well, my, my question would be, given that you've, the assistant superintendent you've compared with districts, neighboring districts, um, which...
Yeah, you don't even wanna know how far out of whack we are for athletic activities directors. There, our neighboring districts are making a hundred and five thousand dollars in that first cell.
And their budget is, and their levies are, and their...
Exactly, so I, so I don't, I, that's why I didn't even go there, and I'm not trying to get them close to that number. I'm just trying to look at job responsibilities and duties and time that they're putting in, and it just seems, um, a little bit out of alignment to me with the, the level of responsibility and the amount of time and, um, compared to our middle-school principal.
Well, with, between the activities director and the middle-level principal, yes, I, I can see that, um, within our own pay schedule.
Right.
I guess what I struggle with is, I mean, and be willing to educate me and help me with my perspective, but our school population doesn't equate to what Coeur d'Alene's is, or even what Post Falls is. But yet, we want to pay our people the same for larger school districts only because we seem that we don't have some sort of competitive edge because of the dollar amount? Is that the correct, I mean, we're only doing it based off of the fact that they're paying more, so we should be paying more even though we don't have the population size or the budget, or any other type of funding like that?
Yeah, so, um, we're, we're definitely closer in population size to Post Falls. I, um, I only bring it up because I just want you to have kind of a frame of reference. The activities director position that I'm referring to is actually at Lake Ponderay, and they are, they have fewer kids than we do. Um, but again, every school district has its own financial issues and, and needs, right? So, I get that, but, um, we do have people in the district who are making more than the assistant superintendent in our district, so...
Well, and I don't know how that can be, and that shouldn't be.
So, that's what I'm trying to remedy. I don't wanna take away from people who are, who are where they are, but when you're the second person in charge...
I get that.
That's what I'm trying to remedy, so...
My computer died, it's time to go.
Oh, so, I'm, I'm happy to put together maybe a couple of different ways to look at it. I'm not married to this, I'm just, um, there, these are just a few things that have kind of come to my attention that I just wanted to process with the board.
No, and I don't think of it as, as, as a, as a negative.
Yeah, no, I don't. I'm glad you're asking the questions.
I just, I, I mean, I get, raising the high school activities director, I, I understand, um, in respect to, you know, a middle-level principal, I guess. Um, I just, I do think we always wanna be fair and equitable, and I do think that, you know, there should be consideration for cost of living increase, um, because, yeah.
Which will, right, which will, which will show up on this too, because the four percent will go in, and that will be part of the calculation. Like, I'm not gonna make big sweeping changes and then add four percent on top of that. It'll be based on what that looks like. But I would like to get the assistant superintendent column to the point where...
And I, yeah, if we are in a position where, uh, people have the ability to be in different positions and earn more than the second-in-command, that's, that's a little out of balance for our district, I think. Wholeheartedly. Um, and it shouldn't be that way at all. So, yeah, you, I guess we need to have an understanding of how we are out of balance, how that happens, how it's out of balance, so that we can figure out how to bring it in line and make sure that we're keeping those that are in the positions of authority being paid what the position actually merits. Yeah, I, I don't have any qualms with figuring that, co-conit out.
Okay. I think at the very least, the activities directors, even if we put them at the same annual pay, divided over the two-hundred, so it would be slightly less on the daily.
As the assistant, or as a middle-school principal?
As a middle-school, but as a middle-school principal. But then just dividing it over the number of days, like, it, um, just for an example...
The daily rate of pay is less, yep?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's slightly less, but they're paid at least the same annually.
I can definitely do that, however.
But it's, it's not a huge difference to...
Although what I think I heard Lisa saying was she wanted them to receive the same daily rate of pay.
Right. I was just throwing out just the...
A different way to think about it.
Maybe we could even look at it this way, where they make the same annually, they're just making a little bit less as their daily rate.
Okay.
But they're still making more than what they're making now.
Yeah, and I don't wanna diminish the work of the middle-school principal either because they...
Well, and like you said, they do this, then they do this, but then they do so...
They should be earning some combat pay over there because middle-school kids are challenging. I love them all, but they're challenging, yeah. So, but I actually like that idea, trusty vein. I, I just wanna honor the amount of time that we're asking our activities directors to be away from their families and their level of supervision and responsibility they have there, so...
Well, it appears that, um, when this was created by whoever, um, as far as the categories, it seems like we have prioritized the hierarchy. Um, so, the hierarchy would then move activities directors, activity directors, um, above an elementary principal or an SWD director. So, I don't know, I, I don't know if that's appropriate or inappropriate. I don't know what the perspective would be, uh, in respect to hierarchy because it seems like that's what we've, um, created here based on...
It's really more about the daily rate of pay and the, the level of, um, the time commitment and the level of responsibility.
Okay.
And I just feel like the activities director is a little bit out of whack with regard to, um, following the elementary principal where they just have, you know, three or four evening events.
And they're another one that actually gets extra days stipend, and so if you take those extra days stipend, yeah, which that has to be on the...
Yeah, who has additional days stipends?
Uh, the activities directors do.
So, they're contracted for two-twenty and then paid for more?
Just to try to get their rate of pay up because they're, because of the way this salary schedule is working.
Well, and because they're actually, they do their work over the summertime, is, with the extra days that wasn't factored in.
Is there statutory language regarding the, um, stipends? Or is that just kind of...
Except to the district, yep.
When this comes back to us, as far as, I'm sorry, I was just gonna answer, there is statute regarding stipends, but it doesn't necessarily lay out the rate of pay, but it does, the way that, you know... I would appreciate the layout to be, uh, move the activities director in front of the middle-level because then you actually have the contract days lining out priority or hierarchy.
Yep, so it will be, so the, the order is based on the contract, number of contracts.
Correct, because we're going from two-thirty down to two-ten, and we kind of put the activities director, which is a two-twenty, in between two-hundred and fifteen, which...
Actually, maybe, I think maybe that's why it's highlighted, because we made a change last year because they did have extra days, and I think we did embed some of those extra days in that. Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And then, sorry, do you have more?
No, I was just gonna say, regardless, even if they are paid less, I think it would be more appropriate to have the hierarchy given the number of days on the contract.
Yep, I like that.
Okay.
Lisa, uh, help me understand where the discrepancy is with the assistant superintendent.
It's not on this particular, it's with the classified staff person, a classified administrator.
Oh.
I'm not, I'm not begrudging that person what that person makes, I just feel pretty strongly that the second-in-command needs to be the second-highest-paid person, so...
So, does this column reflect what the current situation is, the assistant superintendent, federal programs director? And you said that there were other people in the district who are getting paid more based on stipends, is that what happened?
Well, I don't, I, that I don't...
I'm not seeing it here, that's why...
You guys do have those in your packet. It's, it's on the classified administrators' schedule. Not the certified administrator.
Federal programs director.
So, the assistant superintendent is a classified administrator?
Yeah.
No, well, it's me.
I was gonna say, I'm trying not to say anything out loud. And again, I don't begrudge him any of what he, what he makes, but this, I don't...
But he's also a certified administrator. I understand your concern, but he's also a step ten.
PDF down. That one?
This one?
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, and I, I'm not anticipating moving, changing this just to their point to, like, I wouldn't have the first step in this be the higher than the last step in his column, that's not my, that's not what I'm planning on. I just wanna get it a little bit closer.
Gotcha.
Okay. So, are we in the process of resolving the stipend problem?
Yes, I'm trying, yes, I'm trying to alleviate some of that.
Stipends for these folks are, are gonna go away?
Yeah. I would love that, yes, in fact, so...
Lot less tracking.
So, I have another question. Lots of questions in, in, in thinking about that. Um, well, first of all, I guess, um, currently, the assistant superintendent position is posted. Um, I posted it last Friday, it'll close this Friday, um, and then we'll do interviews. Based just on some of the conversation that we had when we met, um, in my interview, there was some conversation about feeling like administratively we're maybe a little bit heavy, and at this time of the year, opening another admin, admin position at the district office, I just, it makes me a little bit nervous that we might bring somebody on who's not gonna help us be super-strong as a team. Um, and so, I, I have talked to, um, so, Dr. Pasley's applied, um, at this point, that she's the only applicant. Somebody else may apply. Um, if nobody else does, and she is the person who ends up in that position, my, my thought moving forward would be that we not fill that fourth administrative position this year at the district level. Just to give us some time to kind of figure out what each of us is gonna take on. We, we know we work really well together, uh, our, uh, our strengths and weaknesses are, it's a really nice balance. And we feel like, um, based on what we've been doing, that we can, we can do the job well and not have things falling through the cracks. Obviously, we'll be taking copious notes, so that if that is the case, we'll be communicating that with the board, but that is our kind of intention right now. So, one of the other pieces of, like, with regard to stipends, Kelsey Badger, who is our SWD director, um, is on a two-hundred-and-thirteen-day contract in the same column as the elementary principal, but she works two-hundred and thirty days, so she's getting a stipend for that, so...
Who's, who's that?
Our SWD specialist.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, have some executive...
Oh, well, then, if this isn't appropriate, we can, I just...
Well, I think with the whole, the names and people, I mean, a lot of it is, is public information anyways, but I think we're sort of skating the line.
Okay.
But we can still talk about the position.
So, I, I would, actually, I'm wondering what the board feels, um, about, and this was, this kind of has been the plan for us for a couple of years, was that eventually the SWD director would be the federal programs director. Um, we just wanted to give her some, you know, time to get her feet under her, um, which would then move her over into the federal... into the federal programs column, and we would, and we would take, then the stipend would go away, because she's already working that number of days, she's already doing a lot of that job, and so we're just looking at, most of the stipends that we know we can get rid of are the extra day stipends, so we're looking at how do we make sure that people are placed appropriately, so that we can do away with the extra days. So that's kind of some of the work behind the scenes on the salary schedules.
And that's the way it was prior to Kelsey assuming the position, meaning it was right, it was still the same as today.
Or, yes.
Call around your own concerns.
Yeah.
So, I guess, to kind of clarify, when we established, or when we hired for the SWD director position, we hired that person with the expectation of working two hundred and thirteen days, or did we? Okay, so we did do that. But the position, okay, so.
Yeah.
Or is it that we knew that the SWD director should actually be on a two hundred and twenty or two hundred and thirty day contract, but we didn't hire it that way?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I would say that she was hired, and maybe there wasn't a really good estimation of the amount of work.
Okay.
That it actually took to do the job. Um, one of the things that is happening is that, um, throughout the summer, parents are calling and requesting a meeting with the SWD director, because they're moving to our district and they've got a child on the IEP and they want to talk about services, and, um, or the IEPs are being sent in and she's got to go through them to make sure that we have the resources that we need to have ready to go when school starts. So I, I just don't know that there was a, a really good estimation of how much work it really takes. So she, the thought was, it's probably about what an elementary principal does, so that's where she was placed on the salary schedule, and I think now that she's done it for, um, a while, is this her second year? Yeah.
Um, yes.
Uh, she, we know, we definitely know what it takes for her to get the job done, and it does require those additional days.
Well, with respect to that, if SWD, if the director needs two hundred and thirty days to do that, how is she gonna do the federal programs job? If that position requires two hundred and thirty days, which respectively, I know it's kind of been, uh, oh, actually, it was split, I, I misspoke, that, the federal programs was split with a principal.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I know that.
Yeah.
It wasn't the SWD director, I, I, yeah, we all know my beef with having people wear multiple titles and these pointing threes and point sevens and point twos of positions. But I don't want to give a position as significant as the federal programs director. Um, it, you know, I don't want to chop it at the knees, and I know SWD is a significant position. What I hear you saying is possibly, you know, merging those two within one person, but what I don't know is if we have a clear understanding of the federal programs director, I mean, is that position a two hundred and thirty day contracted position? Because, I mean, it was brought to us that it's not that big of a deal, it's just part-time, it's, you know, it's, it's, for lack of a better word, and not trying to use inappropriate words, it was kind of insignificant, the amount of time that needed to be committed to that position, which, it's a federal programs director. I think time needs to be committed to that, to make sure we're in alignment and we're properly following procedures and statutes and federal regulations, so that we don't get in hot water.
Right, so what I, what I would say to that is, um, when Bob was the superintendent, we had a federal programs director, she, she was in charge of special education and Title One.
Okay.
Um, so it definitely can be done. What I would tell you that I think we need, so right now, our current SWD director has a consulting teacher who works with her.
Okay.
For SWD. If we had, instead of hiring another full-time administrator at the district office, if we had a consulting title teacher working under the federal programs director, the federal programs director then could take care of all the compliance pieces of the, because Title is a federal program, so, um, and work with Brian on the budgeting aspects of it, but then you have two instructional experts who are working with the instructional staff on compliance issues and things in the schools.
Okay.
So if we, instead of doing a full-time person for the federal programs, um, if we, if we structured it in that way, and you've done this before, so feel free to speak up. Whether you agree with me or not, I just, I do want to hear what you have to say. I, I do think that it, it could be, um, it would work, um, fine.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that in eliminating.
One more thing to say.
That's okay. And then. In merging the federal program director and SWD director, in a sense, we would be, uh, decreasing one certified administrator. However, on the flip side, we would need to employ one, maybe two, um, more bodies.
Teachers.
Positions underneath that the SWD director is going to oversee, to make that, those programs in that department run as smoothly as they can.
Yes, the thing I wanted to add to that, going back to the stipends, is we currently pay a three thousand dollar stipend to somebody to, um, kind of oversee the ELL program, the English Language Learner Program, which is a title program, and we, um, and we pay another stipend to somebody to oversee the homeless, um, part of Title One. I, we would do away with those stipends and all of those, those two pieces would go with that Title One consulting teacher and the, and the federal programs director, so.
Okay.
It, this is my way, I've really been thinking since we met about what you said about stipends, and then, um, there was the comment about just some administrative pieces, and so I've just been trying to think, how do I take care of some of that, um, without putting us in a position where we can't do our jobs? So, I wouldn't be coming to you with this idea if I didn't think it was going to work for kids in the schools and that we couldn't do it.
So, I, I mean, I would love to see our SWD federal programs department actually not be struggling in trying to maintain its effectiveness for our district, that's just, that's not healthy for anyone.
Right, and they, and the Title and the SWD work hand in hand on a lot of things, because SWDs are tier three and Titles are tier two, and so they're working on interventions together, and oftentimes SWD teachers are providing interventions to our Title kids, because that's where their instructional level is for that intervention time and, or vice versa. So they already work really, um, well together and collaboratively, so, um.
And that, and that was a lot of the reason why we did it at the time when I was involved, you know, put those two together, because there's quite a bit of overlap there, uh, both in terms of teaching staff and as well as responsibility for the director.
And then both Dr. Pasley and I have led the Title One, um, part of federal programs, and so we are obviously there to assist as needed. Um, but one of the things we've been working on is kind of a task analysis, like, this is what Lisa's gonna be responsible for, this is what Lynn is responsible for, this is what, you know, Kelsey's responsible for, so, um, everything so far fits neatly into that little puzzle.
So, you realize there's a list, laundry list of.
Well, I've been checking in with, with Board Chair Thompson, just saying, okay, so I, I know this is something that the superintendent does, and, and, um, what do you want that to look like? So I'm trying to kind of figure some of those pieces out, the parts of the superintendency that I didn't do really, or anything related to the board, so just, um, kind of working through that. So with your permission, I, I, I will just kind of play with this and maybe give you a couple of different options to look at, and I'll, I will give them to you well in advance of the June fifteenth board meeting, so that you have lots of opportunities to look at them and, and then ask, ask me some questions.
I, uh, you're, you're better at this than I, obviously, but I think what would be helpful to the board if, in some sort of chart form, you know, we can see what the existing alignment is and what your recommended alignment would be in the future.
As far as, as far as.
Positions.
At, at this, at the district office. Okay. And do you want, like, um, do you want to see the task analysis we're putting together, so you can kind of?
No.
You don't want that one with me too? You don't want that one with me too?
That's your bad.
Okay. It's actually, I guess, when does the org chart get, um, approved?
It's already been approved, but we'll need to reapprove it.
Right, we do it every year, right?
Yeah, we usually do it in February.
Oh, after the, after.
Yeah, after we appoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, if I worked with, um.
In the summer.
If it's a significant change, we should still.
We already, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's the easiest way, as far as the chart goes, for you to see changes if, is on that org chart, if I work with, who did the last one?
Rebecca.
So if I work with Rebecca and, and have her make these changes, I'm suggesting on a copy of the org chart, you could look at them side by side, is that good enough? Or would you prefer looking at it in differently?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Whatever's easy for you, or Rebecca.
Right, and all of this obviously is gonna have to be after we see who ends up as the assistant superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So did we come to a consensus on the activities director thing, exactly how we're gonna approach that? We had two or three ideas on the table, I'm not sure.
I don't know that we came to a consensus on it.
Yeah. I, I actually liked, um, Trustee Bane's idea about, um, having them have a little bit lower daily rate of pay than the middle school principal, but, um.
The annualized salary would be the same.
Would, yeah. Because of the number of contracted days.
The other issue I heard was a kind of a hierarchy thing.
That I got, that was, we're gonna put it in there according to number of days contracted, instead of what the position is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for bearing with me, I miss this a lot, um.
One other thing, when this is all said and done, I know Brooke's trying to get rid of stipends, so if we have any to deliver, we'd like to know what those are.
Yes, so there will be some stipends, we're not gonna be able to get away from all of our athletic coaches and our activities, um, advisors, yeah, those are all gonna be.
Yeah, that's.
But those are ones that makes, those make sense to me to give those, I mean, that's.
Undisclosed ones to answer to.
The additional work.
You know, across the board with certificate staff, I mean, there's.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Leadership stipends, some stipends that are in negotiated agreement, things that have been there a long time.
Those are identified as such.
Correct, um, most, you know, the master stipend, we'll still have quite a few stipends, just.
Right.
To know, but we certainly can look at the ones that make sense, let's think what you're doing, and pair them, and.
So we.
Which I think is.
Yeah, we have some.
Easier for us, actually, for payroll and everything, we're, I have no problem. I'm just telling you, there's, it, it is sort of, some of them are just, they are, yeah.
It's, it's a little bit easier to handle some of, um, some of, like, at the admin level, because it's, it really gets down to the number of days you're working, and that, that's how that's filling the gap, but you have to, with the certified staff, you know, we have, um, we have people who are kind of, um, lead people for groups, and so there's a lot of, there's work outside of their contracted day, and so they're, they're getting paid for that, or they, we have, this year I've got, um, high school science teachers who are working on, um, their instructional calendars, uh, looking at some scaffold, just adding resources and scaffolding for some kids who are struggling with reading and math and are making, it makes science harder, and that's, they're doing that during their summer vacation, so I'm paying them a stipend for work outside of contract time, so we can definitely group them.
Yeah, just categorize it.
Mm-hmm, so that, um, and then, I don't know if it's helpful before you have to, before you have to approve all the stipends, if we have, I, I know you love meetings, but if we had like a quick meeting like this, I was talking to, um, Michelle earlier, it just seems like sometimes we ask you to make, to approve things where you don't always have a lot of knowledge about them, and, and it's hard to get those questions answered, and then feel like you can make an informed decision about how to vote. Um, so if we could identify what some of those are and have these kinds of meetings where we get to work through things together, and you tell us kind of what you need to feel like you have everything dialed in, so that you could make a, a motion and, um, approve, um, whatever's coming your way, I'm happy to facilitate that, or, or, um, I just want to kind of know what the board's pleasure is with regard to that. Um, uh, our classified salary schedule, so Brian, you want to talk a little bit about what our plan is for classified? Because we're having a few issues with our, some of our veteran.
Yeah, so when I, the classified salary schedule is, which is actually getting fairly similar to, if you look at our, some of our peer districts and things like that, um, several years ago, we didn't have a classified salary schedule. Um, and so, you know, the board adopted it, and as, we've sort of had the first schedule that was adopted, and throughout a couple of years, it, it's gone through a couple of revisions. Um, one, the first version of it had many more, like, differences between paraprofessionals, and we sort of just collapsed them into mostly you're a paraprofessional and you might, one paraprofessional might be a Title One paraprofessional, another one might be a regular ad, but, you know, sometimes they go back and forth between the works, so we collapsed some of those positions, and then we also had a, a point where maybe some of the classifications really weren't classified correctly, and they said, well, this work maybe should be moved over a column. So we've had some of these changes, and as we've made those changes, let's say you were in the group that, like, custodians originally were on the far left of the column, and, you know, it's part of trying to recruit, plus it's, it can be, um, you know, hard work, we moved them a, a little more to the middle of the salary schedule, and when we moved them, let's say they were a step ten, I'm just using example, and since they're sort of on this new column, we moved them, we didn't keep them on step ten, and they moved direct to the new step ten. Cause maybe by moving from that step ten over here, and we got rid of that, and they moved to this other column to step three, that next year they got like a six or seven percent raise, so, you know, not a eighteen percent raise. So, now they're a step three and then they start moving down. So, as we've done a couple of those shifts, what's happened is we have some people that are sort of veteran staff, but they're, depending on their column, they're, say, a few years of experience, because it, we weren't saying you had the ten years, it was trying to place, and really the dollar way.
And give them room to grow.
And give them room to grow. We, we think, you know, and I can, Brooke can chime in also, that the salary schedule, after looking at these, and she's done a lot of work at classifications, that it's getting more solid. And now, like, this year would happen, is we would get, um, a new hire, and, you know, let's say they come in with five, six years of experience, um, of, let's say from another district to make it easy, and, and so Brooke would place them at, let's say, step five or six, and so now you have the new person who comes on staff sort of placed higher than, let's say, someone who's on step three, because. because they, they were a ten-year employee, but they had this, that history. And so we're thinking that to rectify some of those things and honor our veteran staff, that we might have to give a few veteran staff for, you know, after ten plus, maybe a couple steps down to try to catch up for an equity stake of you. You know, no, no decisions are made, these are us just thinking, um, because it's tough when you're, if you, let's say you're the veteran staff member and you're training the new person, but they're making more than you.
Right.
And so it's sort of a.
That shouldn't happen.
No, and so, but you know, and it's, as we've gone through this process, it's, um, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, it seems, right? Cause we're, we were, people were making, getting more compensation on an annual basis, they were making more money. As we went through that, it just happened that some of the changes, we couldn't just say you're suddenly a step ten over here and give someone a twenty-five percent a year raise, I mean.
We also didn't foresee COVID and the impact.
And the impact on the salary schedule and things like that. So one thing that, like for example, that we looked at also just as a practice, that we, on the teacher's side, you know, it's been in our negotiated agreement where, you know, step thirteen is sort of where they come.
You give up to twelve years.
Up to twelve years. So we, we think we need to have that same philosophy with the classified staff, they don't have as many steps as twenty-eight, so it's probably around step six or seven would be the max that we can really have someone come in, even if they say I've worked in this position for twenty years. Because, I mean, it's sort of consistent what we're doing with, with, with our other, um, group of staff.
Should just be one scale across the board. The military doesn't do that.
What do you mean one scale across?
Well, your base pay is based on your service, yours is service period, so you can't have people out performing you no matter what. So if I come in, if I, listen, so here's an example, I was in the guard in Reno, okay? And then I transferred to the guard in Oregon, just because I had twenty-seven years of experience doesn't mean I'm gonna get a pay raise, it's based, based on my rank, you know, so you don't get extra money just because you have more experience or you're, everybody's the same, that's like across the board, so you don't, you don't have that. You can't outwork somebody that's been there no matter what, it's based on what you started as.
Yeah, the problem that we're having is that recruiting and retaining staff. So if we told, if we told classified staff, you get zero years of experience and you go in the first cell and you have to work your way through in our system, we wouldn't be able, we, we, we would struggle to hire people.
Well, that's what I'm saying though, everybody's the same across the board, I don't understand, this is a, this is a federally based pay system, right? I mean.
No.
It's state, it's by state.
This is district, so it's.
It's district.
Well, so, yeah, for classified, so it's typical in schools that for the non-teaching staff, classified we call them, that there's different classifications, so in other words, if you're a journeyman electrician working on the maintenance crew, you're gonna get paid higher than the nighttime cleaning custodian, that's just standard practice.
Right.
So because you're a journeyman electrician, you have all that training, you're working with all that, so our lead mechanic is, does get compensated higher than our bus drivers in that same department.
Right.
Um, and so that's what I'm talking about, these classifications, is that we've had some movement of those columns in history, but that, so if I have, so let's say as we've worked through the years of no salary schedule now to where we're at, and let's say I had a, my HVAC Ken Hart, sorry, shouldn't say it. Let's use, but we have a, an experienced custodian who used to be on this column the left and when they transferred, they were step ten, they went to three, and then we just had a new hire and they've had ten years of experience at Coeur d'Alene as a custodian and we gave them seven. So now I have this one custodian who just came in, who's getting more, see the dilemma we're sort of in? So we're just trying to honor, I think, some of our veteran staff and move them down, but we can't do it forever and it's never gonna be perfect, but we're trying to.
We're trying to find that sweet spot in between of honoring our current staff, but still being able to recruit. Because we're having, we're really, really struggling with that.
And also able to, um, afford it, you know? You know, there's.
There is that.
There's sort of all that because.
A little caveat.
Right.
And final analysis, that's the main part.
That's right, yeah.
So, but we do want, um, to, so for, I mean, there's just, we're, I think we're looking at that, I mean, as far as the, if one person or if a group was able to move down more than one, I mean, every group right now, they move down one. If they stay with us, they go down one, so let's say, for example, more veteran staff, we have to go down two or three. That would be consistent though, it'd have to be you've been with the district for X amount of years.
That would be on a tiered thing, so.
Can you, can you give us a feel for, you know, how many personnel maybe we're talking about that needs that kind of adjustment? And how much of an adjustment are we talking about?
I haven't, I haven't, I mean, it would be, I mean, it'd be several, I mean, it.
Maybe fifty percent.
Fifty percent of our staff possibly.
So like, yeah, so if you have, I mean, but Brian came up with a plan of like, if you've been here, what, three to five years, then you'd move down an extra step, like two extra steps, if you've been here like, you know, six to ten years.
You'd get maybe, you'd get three or, right, and then maybe if you're fifteen plus.
And then plus the four percent COLA on the schedule. And then the plan would be to also get rid of that column F and this is where we would probably do a stipend because we only have one category in there.
Well, I was gonna ask, who placed the titles in those categories? I mean, how was that determined?
Um, so prior to Dr. Meyer coming to Lakeland, um, just prior, Lake Ponderay paid a lot of money um, to have a, a consulting firm come in and look at, um, levels of supervision and job responsibilities and classify different jobs within the district. And, um, so we, we were able to kind of piggyback on that and use some of that information and so it wasn't something that we did, it was something that.
Yeah, there wasn't a salary schedule at all prior to this, it was a lot of times just picking and choosing. Well, and I'm not against the salary schedule, I'm a little confused why if you have the lead mechanic and the lead custodial and the lead grounds and the lead maintenance, why they are not all in the same category? I don't understand that, but they are, I mean.
Yeah, and so.
Because I don't, but then we also have a head custodian, but I'd like to know what the difference between a head custodian and a lead custodian are because to me it seems like they should or could be one and the same.
No, so we have a, a lead custodian that is a district position.
Okay.
At facilities department. Yep.
Okay.
And they basically are responsible for the training and overseeing, so it's a different one.
Um, the head custodian is the daytime custodian in our buildings who's there during the day when the kids are in the building too.
And then a custodian is the night person?
The cleaning crew.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The head custodian typically does, uh, more than, doesn't do very much cleaning and it's more actual maintenance of the facility.
Minor, minor maintenance.
So there is a tool that can be done, so like if somebody wants, says, oh, I have more job responsibility, I, my job description consists of more of these duties or whatever, then they can come to across for and request like a reclassification of the position and then there's certain criteria that it's a point system and then if they fall into this certain amount of points, like what, do they have supervisory skills? Do they have financial responsibility? Um, do they, it's different responsibilities and if they fall into that column, then that's where they're placed. So it's a ranking system.
It's, it wasn't willy-nilly, we just put people where we thought they should go, there was actual like a formula.
Right, and I, I get that, I'm just trying to understand why one lead would be a step above four others or three others, you can't quite read, but.
It's because of where that mechanic and the lead mechanic, where they fell as far as hourly rate in, before this all happened. And so the mechanic is more in line with everything in that column.
The, the two mechanics are weird because they've been here forever and so it has to do with history and where they fell and stuff like that.
Some of it, I, I think, at least in the past, has to do with skill level and.
Educational background.
The kind of skills they have that bring to the position, which may be greater than the guy that's working alongside them.
Right, which I, I firmly believe a person should be paid based on their skills, their education, everything that they have invested into it. But what I hear the dilemma we're having is we have this forced pay scale that we're putting people in and then when we go to try and, we have people that are like being paid for their skill, but because we have to move them, then we're creating our own problem, so.
Yeah, it got created a while back, but.
We're just trying to resolve it.
Well, can't you just have each job, so I'm just going back to what I know. When I worked for Boeing, you were hired as a plane captain and that was your starting salary and then the only raises you got were, if they were negotiated by the union or whatever, there was no steps. If you got a lead position, you got a dollar raise, if you got a supervisor position, you got two or three dollar raise. I don't know, I'm just thinking.
And that's, that's some of what's built in here.
Yeah, but if you had more quals, then you had, you got a dollar, like say if I got qualified on another aircraft, I would get a, a dollar raise, you know, something like that, I don't know how you'd do it though, because there's so many jobs.
And all of that is like kind of built in because like, for example, you have a BI specialist that's in there versus a param, what is the difference? Well, the BI specialist, both of those positions can A, fall into Medicaid billing, but a BI specialist is a higher billable position because you actually have to have a four-year degree. And so they're able to make more money.
They're gonna start hard.
Right, because their skill level is higher, their background knowledge as well.
So it's just, it's things like that, it is, is based on, and typically, I mean, the only ones on here that have to do really with a, a degree is a BI specialist and the interpreter. We have an interpreter that we can have that, um, isn't certified and so they're down there, but then you have certified interpreter. But basically, those are the only positions where they're paid at a higher column because of a degree on our classified staff. It, that's the only ones that.
Yeah, the other thing that is hard is that column A, um, and when we think about our base program, there's no wonder that we have, it's a revolving door when our starting salaries.
Yeah, because they're hiring smiling faces across the street for seventeen bucks an hour.
Yeah, and I mean, we upped that column from like nine dollars an hour last year to this. And so it is, right now, it's so frustrating because I feel like we need to like take off the first two columns and add two at the end. That's kind of how I feel, but.
That's a significant dollar amount then that you're, I mean, that's, that's where we need to go, but how do we get there?
Last year, you're saying that basically we shouldn't have a starting salary less than sixteen dollars, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I think that we should be adjust, we, I think that we should be adjusting the entire scale, anytime there's a COLA increase, say that COLA increase is two percent, the entire scale needs to move two percent so that.
See, all these sales, they, all these sales will get a four percent increase, but I don't, I still don't think we're gonna, I mean, we can do this year the four percent and then what Brian is suggesting to honor our, our veteran staff, but I just don't think we're gonna, I just, I mean, we're a public entity and we're only given so much money. We can't compete with McDonald's unfortunately, I mean, where they can increase their, you know, the, the prices on a hamburger and. It's hard.
Well, yeah, we're starting bus drivers at sixteen oh nine an hour, but we can't recruit enough bus drivers to man our stations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're only working, you know, driving, you know, a few hours a day, so it's like.
Yeah, I just, you know, people can't live on it and you'll find in the exit interviews on our classified staff that some of it said, I, I can't afford to work here, I mean, it's the cost, it's, it's reality of what's happening in our area. It's so sad.
But, I mean, dollar wise, I mean, last year when we, we added more to the salary schedule than what we did for the certified teachers, that was a five hundred thousand dollar increase overall.
Yeah.
So, man.
They were, they, they were like really low on the scale.
And we're, and we're actually, if you start looking at the other, uh, salary schedules, you know, from Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, Lake Ponderay, Moscow, all that, we're not that different, honestly, some of the positions there, they're, um, you know, I know talking to some of the other neighboring districts that they're facing the same thing or looking at doing, um, some higher increases on the classified side. You know, the thing is, is like if we did say, okay, our minimum was sixteen dollars an hour, then, you know, but you have to move everybody across then, right?
Right, yeah.
And that would be, you know, you're talking a thirty percent increase, that would be millions. I mean, that, it's just, and we get funded by the state for a classified salary, um, roughly about half the positions we actually have by the funding formula, that's probably the one that's as far as the way the formula works. And they give us approximately, I think, twenty-three thousand dollars for a full-time FTE, that's someone working two hundred and sixty days a year, eight days an hour, you know, so twenty, eighty hours, so that's a full-time FTE, which twenty-three thousand equates to about eleven bucks an hour what the state provides us.
Yeah, before taxes.
Correct, so.
Well, and that, that goes to the other piece of the puzzle and that is, um, numbers of staff and whether or not, you know, we don't have enough or maybe we got a few more than we need. Which could help, you know, fund the increase if we didn't have, I, I, I'm just, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, I'm just saying that's a piece of the puzzle we have to cope with.
Right.
And I think to prioritize, the, uh, prioritize, priority, they came so tired, anyways, you know what I'm trying to say? Prioritizing, uh, what, you know, what is our priority? You know, is our priority sports or is our priority reading and writing? Is our priority, you know, making sure we have so many paras or SWDs or whatever or so many assistants or I, I think we need to, with the way everything's going, I just think that we're pushed to that. We're really gonna have to look and see what is our priority and we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. Even if we went back to the list of, um, the, the aggressive maintenance schedule, um, which hasn't been updated in a few months, I'm sure some of this stuff might be working on or, um, but just off the top of our heads going through the district, looking for things, looking at things that need to be done, we have twenty-eight million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars in maintenance that needs to be done in the district.
And that's not at current prices.
Right, exactly, and now we need to pay people because we can't run the district without people, you know, but.
Or to a point, they might not even be able to drive to work.
Right.
If we get further into the air, based off of what we're paying.
Yeah, so I get that we have all these other positions in the district that get all this stipend, stipend, stipend. They were very heavy into sports, but the bottom line is, is that we're an educational institution and we're getting squeezed pretty close to not being able to provide a very good education. And we're getting squeezed pretty close to not being able to provide a very good education, in my estimation. We, we're, we're trying to implement curriculum. We don't even have curriculum. I, I, I just think we need an overall picture, in my brain anyways, an overall picture to really. Take a hard look at where are we and where are we going, you know, cause we can piecemeal it all together. But then when, when something comes up, because we don't have that view, then we're stuck, you know, trying to take this from here or this from here or.
What would be nice to understand is, and I, I don't know how much more this would be, but. How many of these positions do we have? I mean, like how many base parapros do we have, which I don't really even think we should go there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'd go there.
But, uh, you know, how many admin assistants do we have and?
I mean, I can get you all that information.
And where are they? I mean, like how many does bedkeeper have? How many does guard would have?
Yeah, we have no inventory of what we.
Oh yeah, that, that would be that difficult. I can provide that. I guess, when would you want me to provide that? I mean, we're working on.
Next week, not.
Tomorrow.
That's why she's trying to do a hundred and ninety-nine.
Well, I would say, when these schedules are being presented for approval.
June.
Yeah, it would be appropriate to have that information because, did you jiggle something?
I just wasn't.
Okay, I'm like, somebody's trying to get in. Poor Bob, I'm looking at him going, over there. Um, it would be nice to know because we do need. I mean, we have the dilemma that we don't pay well for entry-level positions. When we have to compete with the other industries.
I will tell you, and this is just, Lisa knows how I feel about this. I, I know that there's a couple of positions that are not paid where they, they should be and like, I really feel. The paraprofessionals have become a big part, uh, with our increasing, um.
Yeah.
Students with disabilities that we have in our district and those.
Significant behaviors.
Those paraprofessionals are literally getting beat up.
Yeah.
Yeah, every day, go home with bruises and, I mean, everything else. And so I, I feel like, you know, passionately, that's one group. I mean, a, all of us, all of them are underpaid, our base, you know, our base paras and everything else. And that's a difficult job in itself because there's split shifts on that, which makes that position, um, more difficult. There's dilemmas in, uh, in several of them. I just, I don't know what the solution is when like Brian says. You know, we're being only funded eleven dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Right.
On them.
I, I think of the big picture you have to look is that, you know, you, you, you don't, in an organization and that has. You know, multiple funding sources and it's big like us and, and, and these public systems, you know, change does, doesn't happen overnight. And so, are you moving in the right direction? So effectively, if we added four percent to this base and some people moved down one step. That's a five point eight percent raise for next year for them, because going down is one point eight percent. So at a minimum, they're almost getting six percent. And I know it's not perfect, but that's not insignificant when you have. Several hundred staff members. Uh, then we took some of the veteran staff, sort of in a sense, where. Moved and sort of didn't have that lateral shift and got them down, then every time they went another one point eight. Uh, is another one point eight. So let's say they went down three, um, you know, they're almost getting a ten percent raise. That's, I mean, we can only move so fast. Our revenues are our revenues, we can't raise our price.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that some of it is what can you do? And, and we have a lot of needs, right? So, we're looking at transferring some funds from the general fund, take some to capital projects, that's good. We're, we looking at increasing the salary schedule and move right in that direction. Um, we have the ability to purchase curriculum, um, because of the S R funds and move in that direction positively. So we, if you look at this budget, there's a lot of really good, positive things moving in the right direction. And you just have to know that. And I definitely understand because we all want what's best for the program and for our community and wanna get there now. But sometimes it, you know, you just sort of have to take those, those good steps forward and do what you can and then continue that, that.
March.
You know, positive march, you know, as a move forward, you know.
Right.
So I mean, I, I just, I mean, we, I just wanna, I guess, put in a, and I'm the negative person. You know, that we're, you know, that it is, a lot of times we sit here and you sort of start, it can be frustrating, you sort of admire the problem, but. I, if you look at what sort of before you today, I think that we are, um, trying to move forward and address those. At, at a manageable pace.
Yeah.
I have a question about head, not admins, I guess, yeah, admins. Is there a set admin for high school for population wise?
No, that's, that was a district decision.
Cause we, you know, we have four.
Statute that says.
We have four at Lakeland.
No, we have three.
We don't, we do? Why is there four offices that say they're admins?
One of them is a principal assistant, which is a certified teacher position.
I was wondering.
Yeah, and Timberlake High School has actually the same number of administrators and they've got three hundred viewer kids in their building.
Well, those follows what Coeur d'Alene have, double us and they have four. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I, I mean, at some point, I mean, we've been talking around it all day, all night long, but at some point, we have to start having the hard conversations about. Where.
Yeah.
Especially as we start to talk about what we're doing with the supplemental levy next year. So, yeah. We just, um, you know, you have an athletic director in both of those high schools and then you have a principal who kind of is the instructional leader and. An assistant principal who handles discipline. It's kinda how the jobs get divided up, but you know, at our elementary schools, we've got.
Two.
One.
One.
We have a principal.
An assistant?
No, no assistant principal.
They're principal, they're principal assistants, but they're not assistant principals.
And, and you're right, uh, trustee Quimby, there, there is actually a, and there's been a lot of studies on it, a. Economies of scale, you know, where it is, uh, does cost you a little bit more to run. I mean, if you're running a one four hundred, let's say one five hundred kid elementary school or two, two hundred and fifty kid elementary schools. The cost of running those two smaller buildings would be more than the cost of running that one bigger building.
Right.
And so it's trying to find that, uh, sweet spot of like what's economical, but also, do you want, I mean, I worked, um. Grew up in Walts and my graduate class was eighty-two.
I was wondering about you.
You did?
Now I got it. Always a need.
It's, it's a let's see, that's why I have short legs. Um, but, uh, but, you know, when I ended up. You know, living in Southern California for like fifteen years, I worked for Glendale Unified and they had Glendale High School. And I'm sure they're bigger now, had over four thousand kids. The one high school was almost bigger than our district. You went to that camp, it was like, it was crazy. We had a elementary school, Horseman Elementary, had thirteen hundred kids. It was bigger than Timberlake. You, you should have seen kindergarten recess. It was chaos, so. Now, now it was actually, that's still, it's more economical to run it, but is that really the program you wanna run?
Is that the best service for your kids?
Right, so I think that's what you always try to weigh a little bit. Anyway, that's just. I'm sorry for the bird walk, but it is, but it is good, you're right, that there is, so like Coeur d'Alene does get a. Some economies of scale with their bigger buildings.
Right.
You know.
I do have a question. If, if, if you have some folks who you're gonna maybe jump. Two or three steps on the salary schedule, how would you deal with the rest of the staff and helping them to understand why that took place? That person got it, but I didn't.
They shouldn't know, they shouldn't be talking about that.
Oh, they do know.
They will.
You got hired on the wrong.
How many times I have people in my office because of that and I'm like, this is so unprofessional.
But it is public information, everyone's salary is.
Right, right.
I, I think that we would, um, and we thought about that, saying that, you know, like I said, no good deed goes unpunished, right? Cause now we'd get beat up over that. Cause that's why I think you sort of have to have, sort of, this is what we're doing to try to rectify this problem. Everybody is moving forward, so it's nobody there. And then if you did have a staff member, I mean, we have some bus drivers. That are near the bottom of the, of the scale. Well, they're, they're at the top, right? So they wouldn't get the movement because they're, they're vets. Um, but if you were, um, you know, somewhere there where we. You know, because the custodian, over the course of the last few years, moved over two columns, but they went up and now a new custodian came down, it would fix some of that. And I don't think we have to, at some point, we're just gonna have to say, this is where you are and, and we're good. But I think it would. Solve some of that. It's almost like in a way when we moved them, that we froze them. We didn't freeze them, but in a way they.
Yeah, and I understand what you're trying to do. It makes some sense, I, I guess. In the final analysis and when the information goes out. Somebody will say, why did the board do that?
Oh, I know.
It's gonna be up to you folks.
Right, and, well, we do have a, we do have a, um, a classified, uh. Advisory team that has.
How often do they meet?
How long has that team been meeting?
Well, they meet quarterly, don't they?
Uh, for six years since Becky came.
So, and they, you know, try to have building reps and then from every group, so you have a transportation rep, a custodial rep, a parapro rep.
Actually have a meeting coming up, our last meeting of the year.
And so, a lot of those communications go through that group. We get feedback, like if that group actually, as we're, if we've been mulling this over. Came back and said, don't do it, we wouldn't do it. Um, I don't think that'd be the feedback. Um, and then they help explain. Usually if they're on board and, and, um, you know, will help, uh, that process. Um, but that's sort of, uh, I mean, that's how we address it, but I would anticipate that we would hear some comments.
Yeah, well, that communication will be crucial in terms of acceptance around.
Right, exactly. And if we couch it in, um, trying to honor longevity in our district.
They hear all the time because it's, this, it's a conversation amongst the certified staff, um, every year through the I V D process, so. That's language that they're used to hearing, so we can kinda couch it in that, I think.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want future collateral damage as a result of it, so whatever we can do to avoid that.
I try to avoid, you know, collateral damage at all costs, trust me.
I know Brooke had commented about, you know, dropping off the, the first three columns and adding three more on. I, I would be curious to see what it would do to just remove the one and move every, all of them over.
What would the cost be?
What, what would that cost be?
If you just took off that.
Yep.
And everybody over and added another column.
I don't know, Brian, are you able to do the math on that?
In lieu of moving people, doing the, those, the weird steps he's talking about.
Or, or both, you know. So that we aren't compounding the issue and creating that compaction over and over and over again where, I don't know.
Yeah, cause if you're just looking at one column, you know, that's not gonna be the five hundred thousand that you anticipate. Maybe it'll only be two hundred and fifty.
All right, you're a ray of sunshine.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I think that, I, I mean, I think if you were gonna eventually take it and just say, we're gonna go. You know, drop A and then B becomes A and just you move everybody across, that's, you know, another way you could address it. It doesn't address that issue of, of, of senior staff, so.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is, do that in addition to, I know it's, it's money and we gotta.
If, what we certainly could do, I mean, if we started doing that stuff and that for next year.
So, and if we're having upwards to fifty percent of our classified staff that might be involved in kind of.
At least more than one staff.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, the positive side of that is we got a lot of folks who are staying with us for long periods.
We, the classified staff is, I mean, we, we're doing a, I mean, it's a challenge, there's no doubt. And there's those spots that you, as a board, I'm sure you've heard of, but you know, we've held better with our bus drivers. And being able to maintain our routes better than many districts in both, not just here, but in Eastern Washington. And, and the Northwest for sure. Um, with the veteran staff, it's getting, you know, we're concerned, but we've done okay. Honestly, I mean, we've run our routes all that. We did have to, you know, make those routes, um. You know, where they just weren't elementary and secondary, we sort of had to combine them so a person could get more hours. And so that brought a lot of more of our staff and that did help with retention, cause now they're Percy eligible and they're. Um, and then, yeah, thirty hours, they, medical benefits, so those changes have, ha- have helped us. You know, across the board, more and more of our paraprofessionals and, and staff are benefit eligible. And that's helped in the, uh, recruiting and retaining and, and us enhancing the medical package for next year with those dollars from the state. Will help in that. So, I mean, we're hanging in there, but there's a lot of challenges. I mean, you're right.
So, I think we were gonna say the same thing, so I'll let you, oh, okay. I was just thinking about trustee Bean's suggestion. When you look at the salary schedule, if you move over, so if you go from fourteen seventy-nine over to sixteen twenty-six. I mean, that's a significant pay increase without putting the four percent on that salary schedule. And, and if you just had moved that fourteen seventy-nine down two steps, they would have gone from fourteen seventy-nine to fifteen thirty-three. So, what you're suggesting actually puts a much greater increase in people's pockets. Right, and what I was gonna say is, when people, I mean, having the, uh, the longevity of. Say our bus drivers, because they're, they're, they're invested. They came here, they learned that this is a great place to work. So they invested in our district. Problem is, is we can't get people to come in and take that. Time to invest, look and, and realize this is a good place to be on a classified salary schedule. So we have to open the door bigger. And I, I mean, I would say, yeah, let's. Take the A pay scale and let's move her away and just slide that over and create a new F schedule. Because at, to some degree, that's what we're gonna have to continue to do to keep up with what's going on. In our community.
Well, I under, yes, and I think at some point, if you're, that the board wanna do, um. Consistent major ongoing changes like that with the pay scale is that we would have to have additional revenues.
Yeah.
How many kids ride the bus? What percentage of the kids ride the buses in this district? Cause I always see buses riding around with one kid on them.
Yeah.
Cruise around.
That's always the end of the route though.
I don't think so.
We can get ridership numbers. There's, uh, probably about fifty percent.
That was my, that was gonna be my guess.
Depending on the school, it's gonna be way different.
The school provides transportation.
We are legally required for special education transportation as part of their I E P. If we provide transportation, then there's rules that we have to follow from the state. I don't know, I, we could ask the question like, if you, the state does not fully fund transportation. Our revenues are, this year were about one point three million, but our costs are about one point eight, one point nine. So, you know, there, you could certainly, you know, look at that. Um, if you wanna hear some phone calls from parents, you, we could, I mean, I'm telling you, that, that would raise eyebrows. But yeah, it's.
If you do like the ride share, you need it on the spot.
Well, which is actually, sometimes in cities, they, they actually give them bus passes, which is smart.
They're gonna have to make a decision one way or another. They don't wanna levy and they don't wanna bond and they don't want the, the, the. Lower grades riding with the higher grades on the bus and they don't wanna, well, that's all great.
Except that we cannot continue to operate the school district and, and meet the expectation when there's. Nothing to operate it with. Um. You know, maybe that's a conversation that we, that we have with them. I mean, I guess we can.
That goes to educating our public.
Right. Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's my job.
Something, uh, someone asked, did you do one of those blasts this morning about extra guards and everything? At the school presence, police presence?
Did I, out to parents?
Yeah.
No, cause I, I'm not the current superintendent.
Did Becky do it?
I don't, did she?
I don't know.
Did one go out?
I didn't get on if.
I would just wonder if some. I don't think we're concerned about the shooting in Texas.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't.
I definitely thought about that, but I, I don't do Skyler's.
Cause they wanted to make sure we cared about it.
And, yeah, well, and you, you at least were able to say, well, I know that we had extra patrols, so, but yeah, you're right, that should have gone out to the parents.
Appreciate that.
And they were in the buildings.
I do have another thought on how to communicate with the community of the chair.
Excellent. I'll take all the advice I can get.
I was telling Brooke that, that, just that one Facebook page has. Ten thousand, eleven thousand people on it, Raffles Community News. Just share to it.
I'm actually doing, can we charge for busing? I think we can. Um, but I think it's only if they're. So what is, I say, I know that if they're within a mile, we don't have to provide transportation.
It's actually a mile and a half.
A mile and a half.
So, so a mile and a half, you don't have to. Um, so the rules are, you can. You, we can run it within a mile and a half. The state just won't reimburse you.
Right.
By their formula. So unless it's a designated safety route. So, for example, we bus students from Radiant Lake over to Betty Kiefer. And we're able to get the reimbursement back from the state, uh, at their levels. Because you're classing highway thirty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's say there was a. You know, maybe a, a bridge over, a pedestrian bridge over. The state may say, no, the kids could walk and, and it's less than a mile and a half and they wouldn't get reimbursement.
Isn't the city actually, aren't they actually doing that? They're creating some sort of a path, or maybe it's just a stop.
That wasn't the original plan.
Then another stop point.
Stop like, that's what it is with the crosswalk for kids.
So that's, that's on that, um, but yeah, we aren't able to, if you offer transportation, it's, you, we don't charge.
I know we don't charge. What I said was, and we.
I don't believe so. Um, cause you're getting reimbursement state. I, I could have to research it. I don't know if anybody does. I don't think we can.
I don't think, I mean, I, I don't know that anybody does, but I do know in, in other areas, people aren't being charged for busing.
But, um, I think it would go against that, that fees law, wouldn't it? That, that jokey.
Yeah, we, I don't think we could charge, um, I don't, unless we are providing some. Enhanced service for some reason, and we have to get our stops approved and, um. I don't think we could, I don't think we could charge one family, yeah, you have to pay, but you don't have to. I think there would be some issues that we get involved in. I don't know for sure.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I just think that if that is an option, that that needs to be presented to the public. You know, y- you don't wanna pay on any of these four corners. So then what's gonna happen is if you need to utilize busing services, you are going to need to pay for them individually. And what would that look like?
Correct. I, see, I, I honestly think that, um, I don't know a lot of that, if you just weren't gonna provide the service, then. It, it would be on the responsibility of the parent to get their child to school.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is if we are providing, I mean, we provide lunch services and people have to pay for those, so.
About everybody though.
Well, they can qualify for being reduced, but that's what I'm, I'm just trying to consider what options there may be out there.
She's thinking outside the box.
Trying to. To help either supplement busing or, because that is a humongous expense. And it's not something we're required to provide. And I know that it would be hugely detrimental not to provide it. But what are our other options?
I, I think, yeah, I mean, those are things you definitely could look at. Some of it, you have to also say, this is the cost of. Running the school district and the cost of doing business.
Just gas prices is crazy.
Yeah, diesel's very expensive, even though some of our buses are running on gas now, which helps, but yeah, it's crazy.
Um, so one last minor tweak on the last salary schedule that I would, I would, um, ask you to consider is. Uh, just a reclassification of where the HR director is on that salary schedule. With the level of responsibility, the column that she's, that that position is currently in, um, the other, uh. Positions that are in there don't have that nearly the same level of responsibility. So I would, I, the only change to this would be that I would move the HR director one column over.
Isn't that broke?
We can't say.
Oh.
Well, she's sitting here.
Day.
Sorry.
She's sitting in here.
You can only ever say our names without, yeah.
So the college, I was, I was noticing this too. The college and career advisor only works at Lakeland. Why is this a district?
No, they have one at Timberlake.
And Aaron is Timberlake's, called Aaron, Aaron.
Yeah, and so the, the reason why they're on this is because they're not a certified position. And they're a classified position, but they are a salaried position. So they can't be on the regular. Classified matrix. And they're also required to have a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, we just only have one on here because.
Uh, it needs to be updated.
Okay.
That would be why. We do have one at both high schools. Uh, we don't have one at Mountview, but we do have at the two comprehensive high schools.
Okay. I thought there was, but that's what I was like.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, there are people who have vacated positions that are still on this that have to be updated. Yeah, and then have these updated. Waiting to see what happens tomorrow night.
So this is last year's. This is last year's form.
Yes, this is last year's.
What position did you decide to go?
Oh, the college and career advisor position.
That's, that's a classified position.
But it's a salaried position. Cause they don't have a certificate.
Yeah. We have a couple of those that, like the armed guards, another one.
Do they have supervisory responsibility?
It's because of where they are as far as how much they're making at this point in time. They don't have supervisory experience.
Cause we had a little discussion.
Yeah, I thought that that was, yeah. So we could build, I guess, a.
Not trying to create a problem, I guess.
Yeah, that's what we were told was that. That it's a position that couldn't be because they didn't have.
Supervising.
Supervisory.
And that's correct, very, yes, you're correct. So could you move them down kind of where the armed guards are?
Yeah, yeah. But if you. But it's still salary.
You'd have to make them same.
We're living a little in the gray there.
Yeah.
You know, it's not an issue now, but possibly in the future.
I, I, I don't have any heartburn about paying people's salary, but I think we need to have consistency, I guess.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
So what is your proposal, Lisa, regarding the HR director position?
I would, um. Let's see. I would move.
Move that position to.
To column D. And I would move, um, I mean, we could move her even to like D one. Uh, cause I'm not looking to necessarily do a big increase in salary, but it, it gives her the opportunity for growth. Um, and then with the four percent, it'll be a decent, um, pay increase, but it gets her into the right column. And that is, that D one is, um. A little bit more than what she's making now.
Nope.
No.
Cause that was the, that current, it looks like it was probably the twenty twenty-one.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're right. So, I was looking at the wrong column. It still is.
It would need to be at least a step two.
Two. And remember, this doesn't have the four percent increase on it yet either.
So it would have to be D step two.
For next, for next.
For step three.
Putting her on there for next year.
Correct.
Okay, yep. Once we put the four percent on there and I see what the actual numbers are gonna end up being, then I, then I can make a. I'll make that determination and talk to Brian about that. Um, I just wanted to make sure you were okay with that. Movement as far as the, the other jobs that are in that particular column.
So is there a stipend on that position?
Well, she was.
Five extra days?
She was getting a stipend because of the additional, um, amount of responsibility and work that she was doing, so this would take care of the stipend.
So I, the way I see it, we need to put her, or put that position at least at a step three.
Put her on the three for next year?
Maybe step three.
Okay. That's what I'm gonna do.
So is the, how many days is a classified administrator?
Um, two sixty.
Two sixty, yeah.
Nose, nose to the grind down to sixty.
Okay.
So that will eliminate the stipend.
So what are we doing with all these other positions? Are they staying there too?
The only, I just, I moved that, the only reason I'm moving that one is because when you look at the, the positions that are in column C.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The level of responsibility is, um, for the HR director is, is great. There's a still responsibility. So I just, I'm just asking to reclassify the position. I'm not even looking at the salary. I just was looking at the classification for the position.
Strange question. Why do we have a lane E?
That nobody's in.
If nobody's in it.
Oh, that's the, uh, CFO lane.
No, the CFO is in lane F.
Oh.
There is nobody in lane E.
I don't know. Why do we have any?
Because there's a big gap.
Because, because our CFO was expensive.
When we did that, they wanted to have a, if you went across to one column, that one column didn't have a big jump, that there was more consistent, that was why.
Okay.
Could be, then in some districts, tech directors are, are higher level. And even some of our peer districts, so it did give us a capacity that if we felt it was appropriate to move some type of positions there, that there's a place to go.
Okay.
Okay, do you have two?
So. With respect to budget, did we come to a determination?
I was just gonna ask that question.
Let's circle that.
Yep. Tie it up in the next book.
There we go.
Curiosity, we have the transportation supervisor, that shows.
We'll, yeah, we'll update it and. So she ended up step one in that column.
Coming in was not at that salary.
No, she's at step one.
Okay.
On lane A?
Where the transportation director is, and I think they're in B.
Lane C.
They're in lane C, yeah.
Okay. So we have no positions that are in, that begin in a lane E?
Correct.
But there's a gap that we could.
Correct.
Move.
We can stick somebody.
Position two if we needed to, without having to bump and clear up to.
Scene two and a half.
Right. Yeah.
So going back.
So we're not gonna get rid of the HR stipend, the, the HR director stipend?
Mm-hmm.
One more victory.
Yep, that's why I said another vice versa.
I, I, I just want you to know, I heard what you said and starting to whittle away at it, so. I appreciate you indulging me through that long conversation, but I, I didn't wanna bring these to you in June and have changes and not have any opportunity to talk about it. And it does affect the budget, so I felt like it made sense to do it tonight.
I want to thank you guys for all the information you provided tonight. Really helpful. A whole lot better to do it now than in June.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, when we have to make the decisions, yeah. This was a much more open.
And we managed to do it without a presentation.
Yes, thank you. Not that I don't mind your presentation.
Right, instead of somebody standing at a podium and going this way too.
I wouldn't wanna have to sit there. I'm gonna continue that.
Just have to wait. So do we have direction with the budget in respect to the, being over our fund balance? Sixteen percent, do we have, do we have a direction with that? And are we clear on that direction and what we're going to do?
Well, I don't think we have enough information to make any decision with that. We have.
No, 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 I'm not, I mean, not, I'm not meaning how we're going to spend it. I'm meaning where we're going to put it. Because you're right, we don't have information.
I, I mean, I, I think there's, if. In line with policy, I think that if, in the budget, which I could change, on a technical level, you know, the next, by next week, we need to advertise the budget to meet. The, just the timelines given to us.
Yeah, those were my questions I had, um, is posting. We have to post it ten day, at least ten days before the hearing date. So if we're having the hearing date on the fifteenth of June. We have to post by Friday, June third, technical, well, Sunday, but I don't.
We're gonna be fine. We're gonna make it. So, um. That, you know, currently the, you know, I didn't put a, like a big transfer from the general fund to another place for those. I mean. You know, the policy says, you know, if you get above that sixteen point six six percent, um, you know, the board will consider. Using the extra or the, the, the fund balance for one-time expenditures. So I can certainly have budget reflect. A transfer from the general fund sometime next year. We, we don't have to do the transfer. Um, you know, July one, it could be at a, at a time, maybe if you wanted to wait till the audit, we could do it before. From the general fund to, I would put it right now in, in our fund two thirty-one, which is sort of our local facilities fund. That fund we've used for, let's say we get a rebate from a Vista, which maintenance has some revenues. Or our facility use funds, we, real life uses Timberlake High School, we get some revenues from there. If, so revenues like, if recycling revenues, we put there when we get those. We can use that fund, I mean, obviously it'd be a lot bigger now, and transfer those funds there, um, as part of budget. And then the board, you know, at a time when they really wanna consider the actual amount of transfer. You know, that, what we actually do to transfer would better match budget, the actuals. You know, that what we actually did, the transfer would better match budget, the actuals would match budget. And I could build that in into the advertisement, so people would see that. It would sort of show that, you know, obviously that you have a start balance of nine and you're gonna have an end balance, let's say of seven. That you're, in a sense, you're running a deficit in the general fund, but the transfer shows why that's happening. I mean, if you want to see the, if you, the other thing would be to do the transfer this fiscal year and then our start balance would be less, but it would just be a guess on our stock balance. Then I don't think it really makes a difference as far as the net effect of what the board is doing.
What do you think on that, on, I know you were thinking doing it sooner so that it doesn't show up on that starting?
Yeah, and again, my primary thinking there is, is with respect to clarity and transparency with the public. I don't think it makes any difference to us and how we operate. It, it makes a difference as to the picture that people get from that. Because basically all they'll see, you know, ninety-nine percent of the public is only gonna see that even if they bother to take a look at it in the newspaper. They're not gonna come to the budget hearing and hear the detail of how that's.
No, and, and the thing about this, they'll, they're gonna see the same overall balance. It's either gonna be in the general fund or in the other fund. But the numbers are gonna be the same. So if they look at totals.
It kind of addresses that other issue of clearly setting aside funds for capital purposes. And I don't know, maybe there's a way to do that within the general fund budget showing, but I, it's just clearer to me to do it that way, I guess.
See, I think it would be, I, I agree. I, I think it's clear to see it in the actual budget as opposed to if I did the, the transfer now, that's not budgeted. I didn't budget a, a big transfer like that this year. So if you budget a transfer, you say in our budget, we plan to do this, and then we did it.
Well, that's, that's a counter argument.
Yeah, so I, but you know, I can see your, what you're saying.
If you're just John Bill Public and taking a look at what the district's doing with respect to how much money they have at the end of the year and how much money they're gonna spend on capital outlay and that sort of thing. The clearer we can make that picture, I think the better off we are.
Yes.
But it works either way, obviously.
I, yeah, I mean, if someone really of a, of a patron wanting to get in the weeds, I think there would have to be X. Either way.
Explanation.
Correct, yeah.
There's some weedy people.
As long as it doesn't become restricted funds, I mean, I have no problem saying we think we're gonna put, you know, spend this much here and we think this much here, but I don't want to show it as capital outlay and then we go, oh, we need it for whatever.
Right, yeah.
You know, or, oh, we're gonna do this much for curriculum and then, you know, the boiler goes out somewhere or, you know, the heating goes out or. But I agree, I do think it does look more transparent to the public when they look at the budget, if they see some kind of delineation, some kind of line item thing.
Well, and it's, it's gonna be, I think, crucial this year to explain that that money is being set aside for capital. And as we continue to do that year after year, it won't need as much explanation because that's how we've done, that's how we've been doing it. I think, the people that care to know will know and they'll, they won't continue to ask the question, I think.
Yeah, and our ability to do that going forward may become less.
Right.
Overall, how the financial world unfolds.
But the biggest thing is, is we have to stop hiding the ball.
You, you, yeah, you have, you have an opportunity to establish a precedent here that makes some sense, I think.
And even if, I mean, if we, if we move it over and we have it established, and there is a year where, you know, we really can't allocate monies there because it's not there. Well, that's a lot easier to see and explain than to try and explain why one year we had all sorts of money and what did you do with it? And we don't know where it went or how it went, we know it went, and, you know, it, it just, we, we need a better way of, of navigating this. And having that much.
Well, I think we have a consensus about what needs to be done, it's a matter of whether you do it at this point in time or at that point in time. And how that gets reflected budget wise. But I think we're, we've got a consensus that we need to make this move.
Yes. So you're saying you, you can't or you can do it now?
We can, we could make the transfer now. So all I'm saying is that this year, if you look at our budget, if we did that large transfer this year, it would be a big variation from budget. What we actually did is a big difference from budget. If we did the transfer next October, or whatever the timing may be, and we put it in budget that we, we saw that we thought we were gonna have this large surplus. And we're taking some of it and we're gonna move it over there, then it would be in budget. And then actuals, whatever the actual number is, might vary a little bit from the estimate, would, um. Those two actions would, would be closer in alignment for that fiscal year as opposed to having this big, you didn't plan any transfers and suddenly you moved two million dollars over and there's no budget line ever for it.
The budget to actuals would match more.
Correct. So if we, if we advertise this year's budget with that transfer and do it next fiscal year, which is just a few months, you know, a month away.
July two.
The budget and actuals will sort of, yeah, will sort of match, and we could either do it that early or we could, you know, wait until you guys have, like, if you really wanted the fund bounce to be right at sixteen point six six.
I don't think that's.
I mean, you know, I don't know, it's, some of it is how you wanna move forward.
Well, I mean, I'd say we line item the budget anticipation of what it's going to be, and then based on the audit, find out what our actual fluff is and then determine.
Make a decision if we're gonna change it from the budgeted, yeah, I.
The only thing that I would see is that, you know, I would prefer to have the transfer made on July second or whatever. As soon as the fiscal year begins, so we have the ability to begin to authorize projects utilizing that fund.
I agree.
If you wait till August or October or sometime, a lot of your working season for that kind of money is on the ball.
Well, you, what I'm saying though is if, definitely, let's do it July two, I'm in agreement with that. When we come down to the audit, if we discover that we were off and there's actually more, then we can move more over.
We can adjust it to actually.
We could do, and we could, if you wanted me just to be, um. For a, a starting number, I guess. I mean, I could, you know, start with, let's say, a, a number of two point five. Cause that's what we sort of think the increase is gonna be this year roughly, so it sort of matches that. Um, and that would be reflected in budget. And then in July, we could move maybe half of it over. Because you don't have to do it all in one year, and so you, the board is sort of given capacity for that, and then maybe move the other half of the actuals later when you. You know, because we still would have capacity for projects at that point. You know, definitely on what, on what would be happening and, you know, and a lot of the projects of, depending on, on where the board, you know, really wants some resources to go. You know, maybe out several months, or maybe you have to wait till the next building season, just the way contractors are right now, right? It's just, their, their, their summer schedules are booked right now.
Right. And it may take us the winter to do the estimates and.
And, and some of the work of your prioritization.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna miss, forget about the increase we're seeing across the district if we're gonna have to, um, hire more staff to fill those or, I mean, like, I don't even know where we would put more staff, but.
Right.
You know.
That's a bigger issue.
You have to find a classroom to put them in first, but that was the other thing is I would wanna make sure that we are, you know, although that's an ongoing expense.
Not after August first. That's the one benefit to the category one is for those emergency hires after registration numbers come in, is that it's truly, that job ends at the end of that year. And then we reassess based on our enrollment, whether we need that position to continue or not. Um, and if our enrollment is up and it is sustained and we need the position, then that means we're actually generating additional revenue because we have more kids.
Yeah.
So. That does help us as far as one-time lenses.
Cause that alone could be, I mean, depending, a million more dollars, you know?
We came and asked for one point four, I think, last year. That was with a two hundred student increase. I'm praying that we don't have two hundred more kids this next year, cause I don't know where we're putting them. If they, if we do have two hundred more, I'm hoping they're all at Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School. A lot easier in those buildings to add kids.
Okay, so then for, from the board, Brian, understanding that we want the money moved over into its own special place. What would she, I mean, what direction do you need from the board, if any? Um, is it a dollar amount, is it a date, is it, what do you need from us?
Yeah, I, I think one is, you know, as if I use a dollar amount, just use a round number of two point five million and just sort of build that as. You would see, obviously on this, you know, for example, this sheet, in the general fund, you would see on the expenditure side at, instead of ninety thousand transferred, it'd be the two point five plus the ninety. That, that ninety thousand transfer is going out to Medicaid, that pass-through account. So that would increase, and then obviously on the revenue side, up here in other funds, there would be a transfer in a counter that where it'd be going. So you'd see that line would be in budget. Um, and then, so that's one, if that amount is good enough, and then our, it'd be planned to do next year. And then if you wanted some of those dollars moved, do you want them all done in July? Do you want a partial just to get some stuff going and then true up and later in the year when we have those numbers? Those are options that the board could consider.
Okay, so then I would think that at our budget hearing is where we would vote on and give direction with regard to that.
Well, he'll, yeah, he'll prepare based on.
But I have to.
The scenario.
But the scenario I just did, I have to prepare for this publication.
Okay, so you need to know, okay.
That, I guess the timing of the transfer, that could definitely be at the budget hearing if, if the board wanted to think about that. You know, and there's times where we've done transfers, you know, not just the whole meal deal one time a year.
Well, there are some built-in transfers across the total budget.
Correct.
And so those typically take place at the beginning of fiscal year or.
Hmm, often some of them are at the end, um, like this year, some of the transfers are indirects from federal grants, so we.
But as long as they're in published budget, you've got authorization to do it.
Correct.
Yep.
And, and so we could make sure we do those. So if a project came up right away that we had to fund, we could certainly just. Move it right there and, and have the authority from the board. And then it would be reflected in, in this. And then if the board later, you know, if we did get the actuals and you want to do the actual amount true up after the audit, you know, that could be a vote of the board saying that, you know, the new amount is.
You know, a lot different than what we've already.
You know, if it was really close, then maybe the board would say we're close, but if it was significantly different, the board might wanna say, you know, adjust that amount.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
So I think, so I'll, I'll build it in in the advertisement, so you'll see it and then.
And you'll build in two point five, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So does two point five bring us down to sixteen point six percent of the, or sixteen percent of the fund balance?
I'll make sure that we get at least to that point, I guess, so if I, if I need to have a, a few hundred dollars added on there, we'll do that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever it takes to bring it down to.
To at least on the estimate.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Yes. Well, so that definitely looks like that is our intent and that is what we're following through with.
Right. Two point five will bring us down to the six point six, it'll still be above it.
Sixteen point six.
Yeah, the sixteen.
Should be close, but yeah, well.
Well, two million, six fifty-seven, eight twenty-seven brings us down to the sixteen point six.
Okay.
Okay, so two point five, we're still a little over, but I think then, once we have the audit and we see exactly where the number is. Who knows, we may then be at the sixteen point six or below.
Depending on what we use between now and then, if we decide on additional projects this year. Well, I mean, not, probably not in the next month, but.
Budgets are all built on estimates, so.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah, but I certainly, for, at least with the estimates, we'll, we'll have it tie, tie in.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, so do we have, or do we need further discussion on any of the budget, uh, information that's been provided at this moment? Okay. So then, Rosanna, we can go ahead and, um, we will end the workshop. Go ahead and get us out. Eight, nine fifty-seven.